Good evening, Mama Iflambo.
Yes.
Okay, let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, tonight we do thank you, dear Father, for your love towards us. We thank you for all those who have travelled from far, from north to south, from east to west. I pray, dear Father, tonight, as you be with us, dear Father. As you are guidance, as you are protection, as you help us, dear Father, whatever that we have to say tonight, let us do it in a loving way, like Mama Iflambo, we all are together, Lord. I pray that you will help us so that those who on the way come, dear Father, they too will reach safe. Safe drive for everybody, Lord. Help us tonight, give us your help, give us the opportunity, dear Father, to uplift our party name, dear Lord Jesus. I pray that you anoint us with your blessing tonight. This I ask in Jesus' wonderful name.
Thank you very much. You may please be seated. And before we proceed any further, I would like to pay tribute to some of our fallen soldiers, some members of the party who are recently deceased. I'd like to, at this time, pay tribute to Ms. Josephine, that is Ma Blan Noel. And we want to, you know, acknowledge her and pray that she rest in peace. She is one of our fallen soldiers. I would like to also acknowledge the head table. And I will start first with the president of the Women's Arm, Ms. Compton. We have here three members of the constituencies, chairpersons of the constituencies. Could you please stand? That would be Laura from Labrie. Roger from Vifort South. And Ms. Napoleon from Vifort North. Our mobilisation officer, Mrs. Nancy Charles. Do we have any of our trustees present? Mr. Clary, are you here? He's not at the head table, but he's somewhere around. Our treasurer, Mrs. Johnson, Marcela Johnson. Our elections officer, Mrs. George, Mrs. Beryl George. General secretary, this is Janine Girodi-Martinire. Our deputy chairpersons, are any of them present yet? No. Deputy political leaders, we have Senator Dominic Ferry. And Mr. Guy Joseph. We also have Mrs. Fortuna Belarus, who is a former acting chairperson of the party and former minister in the last cabinet. Ladies and gentlemen, to set the ball rolling right away, I would like to call... Oh, sorry, I didn't acknowledge our chairman. Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. You see, I thought he was still in New York. So, I would also like to, remiss of me, I would like to acknowledge our chairman, Mr. Theron Puddin. And ladies and gentlemen, without further ado, we go into the warm southern welcomes immediately. I would like to call on Mrs. Albuta Napoleon, who is the mobilisation officer for the constituency of Vifort North, and she will set the ball rolling with a welcome message.
Good evening to all.
Evening.
It is an honour and a privilege to extend greeting to the distinguished members of the National Executive of the United Workers' Party, our loyal supporters from the constituency of Labrie, Vifort South and Vifort North, representatives from our media house, alliances, our online supporters, both fair and in the diaspora, and well as proponents from the various caucuses in Canada, London, New York and Texas, listening on Zoom and YouTube. And to our guests, a warm welcome to all of you. Thank you for joining us, for participating in this evening town hall meeting. Welcome one, welcome all. Then acknowledgement, Vifort North, for their service and dedication to our great party. Mr. Peter Ambrose of Bellevue, Mr. Sydney Cherry of Grace, Mr. John Ramantall of Pero, and Mrs. Georgia John of Vijay. Thank you.
And this is a welcome from Vifort North. And just in case you don't feel wrapped around the southern welcome sufficiently, I would like to call on the chairperson of the Labrie-Oge constituency, Mrs. Laura Jean-Pierre, to also extend a Labrie-type of welcome to you.
Thank you, everyone, for to call already having been established. I would like to issue greetings from the children, the mothers and the fathers of Labrie-Oge. It is quite fitting that we share and collaborate with Vifort North and South, uniting in our common cause. We have suffered together, we have been let down together, and we will stand together. In the near two and a half years since we relinquished the reins of leadership of our fair island, we have seen a marked difference in our lives and not for the better. We, the children of the South, have suffered the most. Since 2021, we have seen a distinct disrespect and negligence towards our people. We no longer are getting a brand-new St. Jude hospital. Instead, what we are getting, what are we being asked? We are being asked to go back to the old hospital with its outdated electricals and plumbing, which is no longer relevant to a modern structure with vast expansion limitations. Another disaster waiting to happen. Our country has secured $200 million to complete an 80-year-old structure, which according to an esteemed doctor, Dr. St. Rose, would not last another 10 years before we have to go back to the drawing board. And despite all of this, we still do not know how much it will cost to continue the old St. Jude. I didn't say it, our PM said it. It cannot be that we put character over building ahead of functionality. And if you heard Dr. St. Rose, you would have heard her line out why it is so important or why the new St. Jude would have been so important. Everything would have been together. The English would say washing your hands and drying it with a dirty towel. We have been promised so much, and we in the South are most impacted by the misrepresentation. Aren't we worthy of having a top-notch, state-of-the-art hospital? State-of-the-art airport? Seaport? These would open new opportunities for our youth, keeping them productive together, working together and not fighting against each other. Aren't we worthy of this touted new frontier for Southerners, encouraging foreign investment? Why do we... Now, we're not escaping as citizens. Why do we accept second-class citizen treatment when we have been so faithful and so loyal in the South? The South has yielded the first of many. The first and only Mr. Universe, the first elected PM, Sio, world-renowned climate change innovator came from the South. We are exceptional, we are phenomenal. Why don't we believe it and demand what we are worth? Why do we accept disrespect? I implore you to stand up and write your own history. Select your servant leaders well so that we can get quality representation. This cycle, let us break the chains that bind us to abuse. It's time for retribution. In the words of Bob Marley, "Every man got a right to decide his own destiny, and in this judgement there is no partiality." So, arm in arms, with arms, we'll fight this struggle because that's the only way we can overcome our little trouble. No more internal struggle. We come together to overcome this little trouble. Soon we'll find out who is the real revolutionary because I don't want my people to be contrary. At this point, I would like to acknowledge the following persons from Labrie-Oge for their service and dedication to our great party. Mr. Francois Chalmine from Bansla Grass. Miss Eugenia Ogus, she's everywhere, whether we provide transportation or not, she's there. Mr. Joseph St. Helen, another one, he's always there, Magway Panin Transport. Mr. Jonas Plummer, always willing and able. And Ms. Jane Ramroach, whether she's here in St. Lucia or abroad, she offers her service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. You said it better than I could have. After all, you're from the South, you know better than I do. You know the only problem with the South? They told you, "We put horses before hospital." And you went and you put donkeys in a horse race. But I know, as Laura has indicated, the South is replete with smart people, and you will do the right thing. I would like to call on the following people to please come up and stand by. Mr. Janelle Jean-Luce, Mr. Wayne Harrow and Mr. Emmanuel Clary. But at this point, I would like to call on yet another speaker, this time from Vifort South. I know him as the journalist, but I see here Mr. Roger Winter. He is the PRO of the Vifort South constituency branch, and he will give you the Vifort South welcome.
Mama Iflambo!
Yes!
I will not be singing it tonight, I will be reading it. Good night to all. Good evening, my brothers and sisters, those following us live on the various social platforms in the diaspora. We would like to welcome you to all our Southern Zonal Town Hall meeting, which encompasses Labrie, Vifort South and the host community, Vifort North. As a young man growing up under the United Workers' Party administration in the 80s and mid-90s, we had a thriving economy in the south of the island. And you would remember that at that time, Vifort was the industrial capital of the island. There were factories all in the south. However small the pay was, there was a salary to take care of a family. When the Labour Party administration came into office in 1997, we started to see a decline in our economic activities in Vifort. We saw a number of factories and small businesses fold up. The only time, and I say the only time, we had a sign of hope was between 2016 and 2021 under the United Workers' Party led by none other, the Honourable Alan Chasney. We started seeing economic activity again in Vifort as a result of the following projects: the Huron International Airport project, the St. Jude's project, Ojo Labs, DSH, ITL BPO, the water project in Greece. I live in Vifort and I can tell you, Sandy Beach, Rodney Bay had nothing on it because there was activity on Sandy Beach every single day. And I dare anyone to call me a liar. A total of $1 billion in investment, that is what Alan Chasney promised us. $1 billion of investment, and we turned and shied away from it. Today, Vifort is like a ghost town. And if you think I lie, it's 6 o'clock, passing Vifort. No economic activity taking place right now under the St. Lucia Labour Party administration because these projects were either stopped, right? Which brought more economic hardship to the people of the South. And when I tell you economic hardship, Mohammed, Bagai Wed. To add insult to injury to us, the people of Vifort, the Labour Party administration have declared us as an escalated crime zone. Flabo called us the new frontier of opportunity. They called us the pole of the Caribbean. But Labour said we are an escalated crime zone. That is the tagline that they have attached to us. To make it worse, we are learning that they have signed a deal with global port holdings. And as a result of that deal, the Labour administration have placed an embargo on us in Vifort South, the people for the next 40 years. You know what it means? We will all be gone before that is lifted. And we are accepting this in silence? Why are we accepting this? We need to stand up. It's time to stand up. Where are the elected district reps for our constituencies? They are missing in action. You know they're missing in action, you know why? Because in the South, breadwinners of families either worked at Huron International Airport or at the docks. And when you place this embargo on the docks or our ports in Vifort, it means that you're saying that about half or three-quarters of our families can starve to death. There will be no income for us, no income. And our representatives that we have placed in parliament to mind our business have turned their backs on us. What are we going to do about it, Vifort South? You expect me, right, and others to lead the charge for you while you sit and hide at your home because you're scared? But when Alan Chasney was in power, there was a Vifort four-sees and all of them, right? That were marching and making noise and they were not stopped. We need to stand up. We need to stand up. You know, and you know, these representatives, we have guaranteed them permanent employment for the last 15 to 25 years, including a pension. Labrie have suffered enough under this Labour administration. I say enough is enough. We are in trouble. We are in trouble and we need to stand up. We need to send the Labour Party a strong message: no more Labour pensions. No more Labour pains. Messie, isam nu pa ka laspe fev ba leba? Depi mwe se ti boi nunileba la, a ye pa ka fev kisa bu fev? Ti we yo, messie? Ia le bu di leba fev zafei. $1 billion of investment ek nus tila leba. Leba nu kota, nu kota leba? Leba pa kota nu. Kumane usa weste kumunbi kipakopam kota. Messie, it's time that we, the people of Labrie, Viewfort North, Viewfort South, wake up from this dream and allow the United Workers' Party administration the opportunity to build and develop the South for us. I mean, all of us and the people of Saint Lucia by extension. You know, when I think of our Prime Minister, you know, I remember this story. You know, those of you who have read it, King Midas with the golden touch? You know, everything King Midas touched, it turned to gold. We have a Prime Minister, everything he touches turns to a flame! Deteriorates everything he touches, and let's start with his constituency. And Saint Lucia is slowly deteriorating under the leadership of this Prime Minister, Philippe J. Pierre. You know, I would like to acknowledge some of our people from Viewfort South for their service and dedication to our great party. And tonight, I would like to acknowledge Miss Lucille Jones, Mr. Jack Rennie, Mr. Michael Polio. I saw you somewhere, Mr. Polio, stand so we can see you. Mr. Nicholas Glass and Mr. Andrei Yellow-Jabatis. Thank you very much, my brothers and sisters. Mama Iflaba!
Yes, you heard for yourself. Who feels it knows it. I don't want to sound like Laura quoting Bob Marley. But the little bit of Bob Marley I remember is a line that says, "We are confident in the victory of good over evil." Because what I just heard from hearing from the people of the South. So you know what? If you're not from the South, you'll have to wait a little. I want to hear more from the South. And so now, I would like to call on Mr. Janelle Jean-Luce, who is a youth, to address you. And I just want to let you know that whatever we do, the United Workers' Party is always mindful of the young people, and we are always mindful of their future. And of course, you have heard one or two women so far, you are going to hear some more. We are mindful too, that the real strength and power of the United Workers' Party lie with the women of the United Workers' Party. But at this point, I would like to call on Mr. Jean-Luce to address you.
I want to say a pleasant good evening to everyone and to thank everybody for showing. I'm going to try to be as short as possible. Okay. Everybody from my community know me as Blade, so whichever name you heard there, you may not know me by that name. So I'm gonna do like a blade does, cut it really short. And I'm gonna start with this. This boutique mindset is not for Saint Lucia. Neck is gold or silver, and somebody comes and takes it and run. Some of us will chase. If it's in brass or metal, we would probably just stand there and allow that. We need to understand the value of our party and what we stand for. And as a young man, as a young man in my community, I have the school to be thankful for, and I can still say it was under the United Workers' Party. This building we are holding this meeting in is to be thankful under the United Workers' Party. United Workers' Party is a party of an international structure. Labour Party is a party of a boutique mindset. When I say boutique, I mean a small mindset. They will go to the shop five times for the day. They want to cook a meal, they go to get the cube. When they come back, they realize they're missing curry, they go and get the curry. They realize they're missing salt, they go back and get the salt. No, 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 no. We need to stop that. And every election, there's one thing I find that has been happening: the presence of people.
Not yet. Well, I was told that we are having some problems, and our people who are joining us online are complaining because the internet is dropping, and the technicians are trying to rectify the problem. Now guess what? They told me while that is happening, they want the people online to also hear what the speakers are saying. So they asked me to spend a little time talking about what the government has done. Um, 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 anybody can help me? Anybody can help me? I mean, you know what? I will tell you instead what the UWP will do. And if it takes them five hours to rectify the problem, I'll be here still. I bought textbooks for my daughter that was over $100 for one. Exe jusa asemo ma lakasavi levi telma. So laoka chili, it is not uncommon to have to buy more than 12 textbooks for one child. You're talking about over $1,000 a parent has to find to buy a textbook. So let me tell you. When I heard that the United Workers' Party is providing this ebook, and on that ebook, you can get all the textbooks that your children will need, I said, "Lord, it came too late, but it's welcome." Allem di tana tu. Mwe diya ni de, mwe. Seka de go ba pa kla se cheme lakas kapote ekse go leave lakafosse doyo va. Safini. They will have a little device in their hand with all the textbooks downloaded on it. That is what, that is what we sacrifice for. Hotsiyansee, you just mama nutka di internet la viye. Madhaba, madhaba program, UWP telma asweala. Hoteka wote, ek morte. So ladies and gentlemen, we want to get back to our normal agenda. And I want to thank the technician. He said to me that our internet is rectified. So let me take this opportunity to, although you have gotten the Southern welcome already, I want to give you the real Flabo national welcome. All of you who are joining us live, online, in the diaspora, and all over Saint Lucia, welcome again to you. And we are hoping that as of now, your service will be impeccable, will be perfect, and that you can hear the good messages that are coming from the United Workers' Party platform. So now, ladies and gentlemen, as we continue, I will bring you another speaker from the South. I would like to introduce to you Mr. Wayne Harrow of Viewfort South, who will be addressing you and reminding you of how much trouble we are in in Saint Lucia. Messie, setlisi atuaka.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I must say I'm very impressed with the last speaker. And it will be a very tough act to follow. He said he spoke from memory, but then again, we have different age categories. So I brought a legal. Before I continue, let me just lay the foundation. I am not here as a comedian. I am here on behalf of Viewfort South. I am here to lay out to you tonight and to those at home, those who are everywhere in the world, what we as Viewforsians, South Viewforsians, have been going through for many, many decades. Let me remind you. In 1997, the people of Saint Lucia gave the Saint Lucia Labour Party 16 out of 17 seats. In Viewfort, they said, "Give Viewfort a Prime Minister." We gave Viewfort and Saint Lucia a Prime Minister. Remember, Dr. Anthony came in as one of the most powerful prime ministers in the modern era. He was the Castro of Saint Lucia, the Gaddafi of Saint Lucia at the time. He called the shots. From 1997 to 2001, from 2001 to 2006, Dr. Anthony was the Prime Minister of Saint Lucia. Again, he came back in 2011 to 2016. People, 15 years as Prime Minister, Minister of Finance, Minister of Planning, and the district rep for Viewfort South. That's the foundation I've laid now. That's a fact. You can do whatever you want. You can Google. What I have just said there can never be undone. And guess what? Today, as I stand here, I am annoyed, I am angry at myself and Viewforsians. We should be more militant. And I heard the young man saying, he was asking us to burn houses. Maybe we have to go down that route. I said, "Maybe, maybe." Because someone, somewhere, a political party is taking advantage of the people of Viewfort South and the people of Saint Lucia. I stand here disappointed in Dr. Anthony. In 2006, I called him a political murderer. And I will repeat it tonight. He is a political murderer, because he murdered Viewfort job-wise murder. The development in Viewfort murder. You can't do anything about that, you're a political murderer. Listen, Viewfort South, listen to me. Viewfort South is the only political constituency in Saint Lucia out of the 17 without a human resource development center. Shame, shame on Dr. Anthony and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. You go to Sozel, Tukwe Sozey, near Human Resource Center, Belvi Konya Chelma, Viewfort North, Lakulitown in Grace, there is something. You are our leader in Viewfort. You are the Prime Minister and Minister of Finance. 15 years, over $20 billion in budget presentation with capital expenditure, vitivai, on your own constituency. You say to the people, "I love you, I love you, I love you," and things to improve on them. You have failed them in every regard. Viewfort South remains the only political constituency in Saint Lucia without a human resource development center. Shame. He boasts that he is a graduate of the Viewfort Senior Secondary School. I too am a graduate of the Viewfort Senior Secondary School. And there was an auditorium there constructed many, many, many decades ago. The auditorium deteriorated. It had to be demolished. Today, after spending five years at a secondary school, the best secondary school in Saint Lucia are that, the Viewfort Senior Secondary School or the Viewfort Comprehensive School. Imagine on your graduation day, your graduation ceremony, you have to rent tents, tappoing tents from Billers Choice True Value, so that the students dressing all their makeup the best day, graduating on the tents if it rains a disaster. And you love education and you love the people of Viewfort South. Shame on you. Shame on you. I saw Kensin Kazimé. Ideka kushé alé an choshime. Two years, two years, first MP, Groziliv, two years. And they can boast about Carpent Road. 15 years as district rep, Minister of Finance. Go to see the heights in Viewfort. Go to see the heights in Viewfort. Now, I guarantee you upon your return with your vehicle, you must get new brakes, new shocks. Ek sumache ukwale boi fote apui. This is the district rep that we have. The Prime Minister gave Viewfort a Prime Minister, we gave Viewfort a Prime Minister, we gave Saint Lucia a Prime Minister. And it treated the people of Viewfort like not even second-class, but third-class citizens. Third-class citizens. That's not all. Dr. Anthony, BSc, MSC, PhD, LLB, LLM. Viewfort has been without a library, without a library for so many years. Shame on you, Dr. Anthony, and shame on the Saint Lucia Labour Party. I'll give you a few more examples. You told me five minutes. One of his brilliant, I have to give him credit for a brilliant idea. Hold on. A few years ago, under his watch, they constructed a building in Viewfort, and they call it the Technical Vocational Institute, where the intention was to train or to teach vocational and technical courses. It was going well. You know what the same Dr. Anthony administration did? They converted, they rejected the Technical Vocation Institute, and they put in a full-fledged secondary school. A full-fledged secondary school. Ekachon opasa hen ploma, opasa hen mechanic, opasa hen ayen. Where is the vision? And for many years, as a little boy, I remember everybody talking about technical training, technical training. And you as an educated Prime Minister, political leader, and district rep, you lack the vision to do what is right for the people of Viewfort South and the people of the South? Yo kapali telma maji. 15 years again, you are district rep. We had hundreds of acres of land at Bonseju. Opafé an ye epi. Alan Chastney, who's not from Viewfort, who is not a district rep of Viewfort, came into Viewfort and did more for Viewfort than Dr. Anthony did. Alan Chastney was the unofficial and most productive district rep Viewfort had ever. I remember Stevenson King. On the eve of the last election in 2011, he was being urged by his cabinet colleagues to start the Hehonaora International Airport. He did not call the shots, and he did not do it. Alan Chastney came in, and guess what? Within reasonable time, my people, they got the finances, they got DCA planning, they got everything in place, and the airport commenced immediately. And today, the Saint Lucia Labour Party, they are doing everything in their power to change it around and do this and do that. But guess what? While they procrastinate, Barbaris is moving ahead. Barbaris has attracted international business. There will be a hub for an international airline. Let them cut back, as my colleague said before, boutique mentality. Saint Vincent is moving ahead of us. Saint Vincent is moving ahead of us. Okay, Dominica very soon ahead of us. Instead of taking one steps forward, we are moving backward. And they talk about Proud and Proud, up to now the people of Bruceville. And the people of Bruceville, those who are listening, I don't care where you are. Dr. Anthony, your district rep, which camera is on? This one there? Your district rep, Dr. Kennedy Anthony, has implemented Proud throughout the length and breadth of Saint Lucia. And you in Bruceville, up to now, up to now, you cannot get title to your land. The land that you have squatted upon for over 50 years. But other persons in other parts of Saint Lucia who have squatted on lands for five and 10 years, they are getting title. And he say he loves you. Joe Bruceville is a liar. Alan Chastney, he's a white man, he's a this man, he's a that man, he's everything. Alan Chastney brought more employment for the people of the South in less than five years than Kenny Anthony did in 15 years. I cannot use obscenities. I will do it outside. People, look at Port Viewfort. I'll come to that in a while. The crane at Port Viewfort, your port ekashri. The forklifts, regedeg. Everything broke up, broke up, broke up at Port Viewfort. Most of the stevedores and those who work, casual workers at the dock, they support Dr. Anthony, and he has done nothing to improve conditions at the dock. Nothing. Castries, containers, traffic jam. No one, not Slasper, not Dr. Anthony, not... Who's the Prime Minister of Saint Lucia now? Not the Prime Minister of Saint Lucia now, whoever it is. They think about Viewfort South and the docks. Now, I heard there is some GPH. Now I heard there is some GPH. GPH. So they went into an agreement to develop soufre and castries. And I heard in the same agreement, the government and Slasper should do nothing to improve Port Viewfort. And guess who is the district rep for Viewfort South? Kenny Anthony. He has no power. No power. Now, CUN call at a accident, traffic accident, whether it's a violent crime, and you are in ambulance, and the ambulance is taking you to seek medical attention. Esukwe ukayi madi ambulance driver, are you taking me to the box or are you taking me to the stadium? That's not important. What you are concerned with at the time is for immediate medical attention. Whether it's in a box, a triangle, a tappolin, a tent, anywhere, that's your first priority. What the people of Viewfort and Saint Lucia need right now is affordable healthcare, quality healthcare, and a healthcare that they can depend on. They go all overseas, they fly to Martinique, they can't speak French, they can't speak Patois, but they go to Martinique. They go to Colombia, they can't speak Spanish, no problem. They go to New York, no problem. Okay? They go to Dubai, no problem. Whether the healthcare is in a box, a triangle, a rectangle, but in Viewfort, Saint Lucia, a modern facility, he, Dr. Anthony, has labeled it a box and the people, they run with that. In closing, in closing, in closing, I want to say to the United Workers' Party now, when you return in office, it will not be business as usual. The people of Viewfort, the people of Viewfort must, must get a human resource development center, an auditorium. You must incentivize investment in Viewfort so that people can come to Viewfort. And our children do not have to leave their homes at five o'clock in the morning to go and work in castries. Okay? Sir Afal Wissin of Viewfort, we still live in Viewfort to go to Sir Afal Wissin Castries, and there is a branch in Viewfort. Skinny told me five more minutes and he tells me time up. My people, tonight is not the night to say to you, vote for the United Workers' Party. I just lay some facts. You use the intelligence that you have to make a decision. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Haro. Thank you, thank you very much. What can I say? If you don't take the advice that you get in now, I was about to say crap, we'll smoke your pipe, but whenever I went to this, it's a little bit more caffeine, I don't quite begin. So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to continue with contributions from the South. And I'm now going to call on a gentleman who has given human service to the United Workers' Party, a longstanding stalwart of the party, who has served the party in the capacity as chairman and has served his constituency branch very well. And he is going to come and share with you some of his thoughts as to what is happening in this country today. So at this point, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call on Mr. Emmanuel Clery of Labry, who is a member of the Board of Trustees of the United Workers' Party, and as I said, a former chairman of the party, and he is presently the deputy chairman of the Labry constituency branch. Again, he will let you know how much trouble we in, in Saint Lucia, in case you have not realized it. Mr. Clery.
I cannot say the word republic today. That was one word. Thank you, Mr. Masto Ceremonies. I would like to acknowledge our deputy political leaders, Mr. Dominic and Guy Joseph, our party chairman, Mr. Prudent, our general secretary, Madame McIntyre, and our mobilization officer, Mrs. Charles. Also, the other members at the health table. The entire flambeau family. Good evening. I also would like to extend the traditional warm and friendly greetings from the constituency of Labry. Unfortunately, I cannot do so. I cannot do so because today in Labry, we are still grappling with the impact of the comical tsunami that struck Saint Lucia on the twenty-sixth of, on Monday, the twenty-sixth of July, twenty twenty-six. Twenty twenty-one, sorry. I'm looking at twenty-six already. When we elected a bunch of jokers to the parliament of Saint Lucia, and instead of good governance, we have one comedy show after another. Today, in Saint Lucia, well, I have nothing written because there is nothing I can say to you tonight about the situation, the troubles we face in Saint Lucia today that you don't know about. The sea is sinking and we do have no life jacket or life raft on board. We have a government that cannot remember what they said yesterday, last night, yesterday, and don't know what they're going to do tomorrow. We are in serious trouble. I want us to consider, have any of us really sat and considered the future of our country based on the condition that exists today? My children, I have nine. Every day I look at them, I wonder what their life is going to be five, ten, twenty years down the road. And this is because of the incompetence that we've seen in the governance of our country today. We, as a people, we need to ask ourselves a number of questions. Are we prepared to live the next two and a half years under these conditions? Today, in Saint Lucia, no matter where on the, on the social ladder you stand, no tout kapon fe. Whether it's show, whether it's wet, ki, where ki mol, ki go, ki piti, ki ho, ki kut, no tout kap senti. And we have to ask ourselves, is that what we really want? Is that why we changed our government? We must take some of the responsibility for the predicament we are in today. The management of the COVID-19 pandemic by Alan Chastney and his Cabinet of Ministers, that alone should have guaranteed the UWP victory at the last election. The other accomplishments and the other achievements of the government should have been icing on the cake. Jordi Anupani ni cake ni icing. Amen farin fós lanuni. Yes, this, this is serious. We are in serious trouble. We need to ask ourselves, what are we going to do about? Yes, we have to take action. And, well, I don't know if the, the, the leader of the political party of our party has patented it, but I, I probably will use it anyway. Action speaks louder than words. And today, I want to ask us, are we, a couple of questions? Are we prepared to allow our government? Well, our jokers. Our government to continue with the atrocity that is currently taking place at Saint Jude? Are we? I have heard hundred thousands of calls by the citizens of the country, cautioning the government, asking the government, begging the government to continue to finish the new hospital, the new hospital building. We talk a lot, but had ten thousand of us picked up our placards and march around the stadium, that would have sent a clear message to the government. And they had them reconsider this stupidity that is currently going on. Are we prepared to continue to pay the highest fuel price in the Caribbean for the next two and a half years? Are we? If we decide all of us who own vehicles and drive to stop driving for a day or two, to bring the message to the government that it is time they consider a reduction in the price of fuel and improvement in the road system in our country, I am sure that they're going to take it. The government speaks a lot about youth. They talk about a youth economy. How can the youth develop an economy when you are destroying the very foundation on which they need to build their economy? How? Our agricultural sector seems, appears to be on remote. Autopilot. And pretty soon, it is likely that we may face a food crisis in this country. Where are the incentives to draw our young people back to agriculture? There is the saying that an army matches on its stomach. One of the most powerful weapons a country can have is the ability to feed itself. Today, we are asking, what are the incentives? What is the government doing to bring back our agricultural sector? A couple, there is an area, a particular area in the South where people vend, there are a number of vendors, about twelve, fourteen of them, who, who have been told, I have another half hour, so I will utilize that time effectively. So, so the people vend on a daily basis with the trays set up by the roadside. Friday, I drove through the area. You know how many vendors were there? Four! And the trays were almost empty. They probably, each of them had three or four items on it. This is where we are today. This is, this is the situation that exists in our country today. Are we prepared? Are we prepared to continue to accept that? I would, I would ask us to declare war. But I know some hack somewhere is going to say the United Workers' Party is preaching violence. Do you preach violence if you declare war on poverty? But they will use it and say, so I am asking us and telling us that actions speak louder than words. Let us back our words with action. We all know what we should do. So I am saying here tonight, the time has come when we need to make a decision as far as where we want to be, the lifestyle we want to live for the next few years. I want to thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clery. Now I'm hearing it from young and old, it's time for action. Mr. Clery said, "Action speaks louder than words." But are you ready for action? Well, I know I am ready for action. So we put in our party on notice that it is time for action. And before long, we want to see action. By the way, let's make sure we're part of the action. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I want to acknowledge a number of chairpersons who are present here. I want to acknowledge Mr. Plankrass Albert, who is the chairman of the Viewfort North constituency branch. Mr. Ian Henry, the deputy chair of Viewfort. Mr. Philip Shabatis, chairman of Miku South. Mr. Andre Lansico, chairman of Ancillary Canaries. Now normally, you know, we have had a good quota of local speakers. When I say local speakers, speakers from the South. Now, ideally, I would have wanted to hear a past representative like we did in Sozelle. Unfortunately, he is not well, so he will not be addressing you tonight. But I just want to acknowledge also a former chairman of the party, a former representative. In fact, he was the last UWP representative for Viewfort South. That is Mr. Eldred Stevens. A round of applause. But we will move on with our program. And I would like to call on a lady, because we've had quite a few gentlemen in a row, so we need to hear the voice of a lady now, a powerful lady too. So I will call on the former acting chairman of the United Workers' Party, a former minister in the last United Workers' Party Cabinet. I would like to call on Missery's Fortuna Bellrose to address you.
Boy, good night, ladies and gentlemen. Bo, mwe di janin. Mokopale, yes. Tepe okuma set on hall meetingsla. So oswea padu butmwe. Padu butmwe. But you know, as former Minister of Culture, I must acknowledge that this is the home of Ramo Polion, who is our national cultural icon. And we inducted him in twenty twenty-six, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, thereabout. Now, there was another, there was another Polion, I was telling Nancy that this evening. There was another Polion who was a visionary. And he was a flambeau. Anyway, it's only flambeaus as visionary. So from what we know, Jolif, Jolif Polion was his name. And he has deep roots and tentacles in this constituency, even if it passed a few years ago. But this was the man who built a school in nineteen, the nineteen fifties. He paid for the school himself. He operated the school, paying teachers by himself, you know? And he even had a school feeding program for the youngsters of this community in the early years. But after Hurricane, um, Hurricane Allen, I think in nineteen eighty, he had to give up the school because it was too costly. But the church stepped in, you know, to help him through this. And I say this because this community have had a number of people that I know. And I say this because this community have had a number of people that I know who have come from the bosom hair and made substantial contributions to our nation. And when you think of those, we know very popular, of course, we have Nancy, but we have people like Jubois, who is from this constituency. You have Timothy Polion, who is the most monitored man in the country today. You have, you have people like Edward Bellas. And of course, they have vote service group, cultural group. You know, these guys go out and perform, you know, leaving the legacy of this community wherever they go. So I kept saying, I wonder what Jolif would be saying today, you know, when he sees what's happening, you know, with this community and Vifort North and even Vifort too. And I understood that the parliamentary rep for this area is his nephew, his grandnephew. And this man must be turning in his grave, you understand, at this point in time? Because from what I hear, so ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say, and I listened to Luke and Laura and Mr. Clery, and they have already said everything I have here, but I'll say it my way because I think it's important we hear it from different perspectives. And I want to start off by saying, there are two major political parties in Saint-Lucia. There is the Labour Party and there is the United Workers' Party. And there are major differences between the two parties when they are in government. Yeah? When they are in government. When Labour is in power, all hell breaks loose. All hell breaks loose. There is no respect. There are no rules. The laws are not upheld. Chaos and confusion reign supreme. And if you check the history books, you will see that nothing has changed with them to date. Nothing has changed. Same old, same old, birds of a feather flocking together from 1979 plywood city and leadership struggle to now expanding records and facilitating criminal behavior for those of us who have been a long time, I've been around a long time, Spider, we know. They have always been that way. There is no difference. And what they continue to do is attract people like themselves. So we must give them credit though, and I always believe in giving people credit. They are very consistent and always behaving as the lead opposition when they are in power. The reality is, because they are not efficient, they use strategies of manipulation to deceive the people and lead them down the destructive path. That is Labour. And what they do best, what do they do best? What they do best is talk. They talk, useless talk. And they use persons who will not think twice to take, to take their Yodi message, to defame, to tarnish and mash up people, if I could say it that way, in the society. That's why, that's why when Spider asked the question in Soufret, you all remember the question in Soufret? Spider asked flabbos in Soufret a question and flabbos shocked the whole world with their answer. But it was what you were seeing. It was what you were seeing. The same old, same old papi show. Now, here's the difference when UWP is in power. When we are in government, everything is more constructive and focused on creating sustainable employment opportunities for the citizens. We see infrastructural improvements and people benefit in the society. People feel and are empowered at all levels. They are more respectful and tolerant of each other. There is greater accountability and transparency. We feel the impact of an active civil society. Democracy reigns when we are there. Everyone has rights. Yeah? Everyone has rights. In fact, UWP makes sure that your buying power is yours. It is not taken away in taxes and then, like Labour does, offered to you as breadcrumbs. No! UWP cherishes sound transformational leadership. That is why when Allan Chassné was safeguarding everyone's lives and livelihoods under Covid, he became the envy of many. And Labour asked you to crucify him. And you did, and you did. I want to emphasize here that while no party is perfect, there is always one between two that stands out. There is always one between two that stands taller, like the Gopitou and the Piti Pitan. And there is always one that will remove you from your misery. You know? We were coming on this morning, or this afternoon, and I asked a guy to give me something symbolic for misery. And he said to me, "Miss Bellrose, la onia maldon, sa se mania ye uzav." That is misery. So there will come, and there's one that will remove you from your misery. Others, well, and the misery that others impose on you, which is what Labour is doing to us. There is also always one that will create hope and present a brighter future for our country. And the party, based on all the records to date, the party based on all the science to date, is and has always been none other than the United Workers' Party. Now, I want to use the phrase, "Tell them, Fortuna says so, put it in the pipe and smoke it." The UWP has workers and Labour has talkers. Well, you call them jokers, but I call them Yodi specialists. Yodi specialists and Yodi coordinators, because each community have the coordinator and then they have the little ones going around, you know, doing the damage. And now, more than ever, we can see them, you know? I don't know if you all have seen them, but we see them. Yo pasa of Koteo ye. Yo asouling yonde lot, sanchi lot. Lord Kote. Mama iflabo. Our party of choice, the United Workers' Party, will be 60 years old next year. And while we have much to celebrate, it hurts me that we have never won the Labry seat and we have never won Vifort North. We have never won. And we are the chosen generation. Let us change that. Let us change that. People are suffering. People are in trouble. And you heard it from them. You heard it from Laura. You heard it from Luke. Remember, always remember, UWP, we do not discriminate. Do not worry about the lies and deceit. UWP does not discriminate. Whether you voted for us or not, we care for you. And when the UWP, and when the UWP has been in government, it has not been vindictive and they try to paint us as vindictive. We're not vindictive. Everybody know me, I'm vindictive, no? Everybody knows Spider is vindictive. You all are saying yes? No. But they say, but we not vindictive, you know? It has been, and UWP always does what is right. Right, what is right and serves the best interests of the people all the time. That's what we do best, called as UWP's. Look at the communities of Vifort. Look at the communities of Vifort North, Labry and Vifort South. All the major infrastructural works and Luke and all the other guys who spoke before told you about what happened in these constituencies. The roads, the schools, this HRDC, the banana depots when fig was good, you know? All of these, the playing fields, all of these were built by the United Workers' Party. All, all of them. And the library bypass, for those of you who know that highway you take when you pass through, pass above Labry. We built that. We built that. But remember, we never won Labry. But we did work in that constituency, you know? And in the case of Vifort South, all of us will forever remember, and that is the point for me from Mr. Harrow. All of us will forever remember when Allan Chassné as prime minister embarked on the ambitious plan for the development of Vifort. What happened? What happened? Labour blocked the pathway for development. And even today, all habits die hard, they're still blocking. Look how they signed the agreement for 40 years, yeah, against the port. Yeah? Is that right? Is that right? Is that fair? Is that fair? You're putting people first, you know? This is a government that says it cares. But they're doing nothing for the people. You know? Labour's leadership, when you really look at them, and I've done my own assessment, and I was telling Nancy in the week, I really have to psychoanalyze both the people in, all the people in this zone and even Kenny and Tony as well. But Labour and, well, I saw Philippia, we've got him covered. Labour's leadership does not understand the tremendous value and potential of our assets, our sea and our beaches. Kenny sold off the seabed. He sold up the whole seabed to Grindberg. And now, keep doing his share, he shut off the whole port in Vifort. No plan, no vision, et Vifort some puensa. People of Saint-Lucia, if you had voted for the UWP, Spider began telling you all the things that, you know, you would have seen and how, how a better society we would have been. And they told me I have only 10 minutes, so I can't even go through the list. But I'll leave it to Spider, so he'll remind you all of what it is. But what I want to say is that the policies of the UWP will always remain genuinely people-centered. We're not faking it. We are genuinely people-centered. We do not focus, we do not focus on protecting the victory because we understand that the situation needs change as society is dynamic and the goalposts can change anytime. And it changes every day when you run in a country. So sometimes the goalpost is tall, sometimes the goalpost is short. Sometimes the goalpost is round, sometimes the goalpost is square. Sometimes the goalpost is wide, sometimes the goalpost is narrow. The point here is that the UWP makes the right decisions with the changing environment to support and protect the people. We're not protecting any victory. And Mama iflabo, the speakers before me warn you. If you do not act now and take a stand against the mismanagement of our country, the goalposts will soon be platted and we will have a hell of a lot of work to do to lift it up. That's why in UWP, we always encourage and afford our people the opportunity to develop the skills and the mindsets for adaptability and maneuvering in the environment. You need, comme dit ma grand-maman, tu as dit, on est pour biker au mouvement. Ou pas ça, ou est-ce, yo côté? We cannot afford to remain stagnant, as Labour wants us, as citizens, to do. We cannot afford to remain in the same place with no options for consideration. We cannot afford to stay in our section or wait our turn to see misery. As human beings, we must always be assessing the situation and work to realize better. And we can only be better if we prepare ourselves not just to survive, but to be competitive. We must be competitive. And you heard Luke a while ago, we cannot afford to stay docile, docile, docile. We have to lift our game, you understand, to go out to win that prize. You know, on the issue of competition, it is that battle for excellence within us. Excellence within ourselves, each and every one of us as UWP's. You know, craving and working and wanting to be better that will make our society great. And good government sets the tone for that to happen. And that's what the UWP does. We prepare you for life. Under the UWP, citizens are free to speak out and express their opinion. Die gonwé. But we maintain that if you are venting, you must do so respecting the rights of others as well. Because it is only through mutual respect for each other that our society will be at peace. So when the Saint-Lucia Labour Party can encourage its own people to be disrespecting, defaming and tarnishing citizens every week to feed their Yodi message without all the facts, what is this saying to society? When an acting commissioner can be appointed and he has allegations of sexual misconduct level against him by his own association members and it's brushed aside by the leader of the country, you know? It's brushed aside. How can there be peace and respect in our country? When Yadi, and I mention him his name because I know him well, I've getted him before, when Yadi tries to bring the governor general down, my governor general, when you try to bring the governor general down publicly, what is the message being transmitted to society? What is the public good in this? How does this help our society? And our society is already in so much turmoil. Mama iflabo, there are productive and constructive ways to address conflict. And leaders, influencers, people in strategic positions in our society must do better at utilizing them. The eyes of the community are always on us. And I say us because we are all leaders. The eyes of the community are always on us as role models. Our young people are watching and responding. And just as when Spider asked you all the question in Soufret and you all responded and the whole world was shocked, the young people will shock us even more if this society continues to go the way it's going. So we have to change our behavior, change our approach as leaders in this country. So for you, the voter, when you see and hear messages of the, from the Yodi specialist, because you know the Yodi, do not be quick, do not be quick to accept it. Do not just run away with it. Get the facts, ask questions and analyze the information given to you. Because I'll tell you something, Labour Party are good at this. They know how to Yodi and quasay people on the ground in the communities. You know, only a few days ago, a lady said to me, "Now they fixed the road, I can't even park my car because they say I'm flabot." Now, that was perhaps her perception. I said to her, "I need you to go back and have a meeting with the lead person in your community to stop it." You understand? And I want you to tip the conversation too, so we can have the evidence if that is really going on. So, but you must know that there are people in the society whose jobs are focused on making people hate each other. There are people in the society whose jobs are focused on making people hate others and creating Yodi victims. Do not fall into this trap. Put yourself in the victim's shoes and think. Today is them, tomorrow could be you. Tomorrow could be me. We must always give the other person the benefit of the doubt. Because in this environment, this environment we are in, you never get all the facts. And if we truly want a peaceful society and a respectful society at that, we must do unto others as we would have them do unto us. And you know, many times you have people doing unto others. So behave yourself, respect yourself, and you'll be respected in return. You know, the Bible says in Proverbs 16 and verse 27, that an idle hand is the devil's workshop. And idle lips are the devil's mouthpiece. You know, and we know there are lots of idle people because Labour can create employment. And that is the problem that you have. So stay alert and be aware of these Yodi, Yodi specialists. Now, as I say, analyze the information that comes to you. Now, as I say, analyze information that comes to you. It's very important. But for me, as a novener, looking to the south, what I'm seeing after twenty-five years of representation by the Labour Party in Vifort South, with a Prime Minister, Kenny Anthony, for fifteen years, and in this constituency, or Labri constituency, after seventy years Labour has been in Labri, seventy years, and nearly sixty years in Vifort North, sixty years in Vifort North, what do we see? What do we see? But who provided for the people? Who provided for the people? It was the efforts of the United Workers' Party. Today, under the Labour regime, what are we seeing? Mothers cannot send their children to school because they cannot afford. Farmers cannot grow their crops properly because we still have water supply issues. People are being denied jobs on assumption that they do not support the SLP. And what makes it harder to endure is when these people who are denied the jobs see people who already have jobs, you understand, getting the opportunity which they could have gotten. And what is worse, you know, what we're seeing is many people who had worked in government before coming back again to work in government, when they should have really trained people to take on the role, you understand that they're there. Ladies and gentlemen, look at Vifort today. Labour continues to work at discouraging the spirit of the people in Vifort. Ask Kenny Anthony about the Belarus Doctrine, and I must go there, you know? Ask him about the Belarus Doctrine. He understood what I was saying fully. He understood everything I was saying, that if a people do not buy into a vision, that it makes no sense to invest in that vision plan. As the Member of Parliament for Vifort, he had a responsibility to support the development for Vifort and help explain to the people of Vifort who had put him there. He had to do that. He had to explain what was being planned so that the people would understand and that they would have a stake in a brighter future. And that would transform and improve the lives of the people of the community. But you know what? He did not. He allowed for the explosion to happen. Rather than enlighten the people and work collaboratively with the government of Alan Chasney, demonstrating maturity and ability to resolve conflicts in the interest of the people, he took a posture of rebellion and insisted that the people should reject the plans for the community. And you know what he cried? There shall be no peace! We will fight you in the streets! The people clamored for employment opportunities, and he chose to offer them handouts. Today, what do we see? You know? Anyway, he also built the police station in Vifort and allowed it to deteriorate because of the type of agreement he signed. Now, PJP is restoring it, and then he's blaming everybody else except Kenny Anthony. What a travesty. Now, it would be remiss of me not to put my own spin on St Jude's. I tell you all, you all know, how much am I, five minutes? Okay, five minutes. Five minutes, five minutes. Another quav chair is St Jude's. You know, we went to school, all of us went to school, and we were told that the British and the French fought for our country in fourteen wars. Seven times French, seven times British. Today, it's fourteen years after the St Jude's fire, there is still no plan from Labour on how and when the hospital will be completed. There is still a raging war, a raging war of ego and foolishness. That's what it is. You know, in determining how two hundred people, that's a lot of money, you know? Your children, my children, my great-grandchildren will be paying that. Two hundred million, we need something substantive coming out of this thing. It cannot be any magic. It cannot be that you have two hundred million to improve our healthcare, and you're setting up a system like we are all pigeons and you just say, Milli, até? No, it cannot be, it cannot be. He has to get it right, and we have to work to make sure he gets it right. We must not be afraid, because I heard a doctor this week, and Spider corrected the name, Dr. Wilson, on the challenges proposed. You have surgery there, and then they have to take you out, bring you out there. What, what is this? You know? And so the whole setup sounds bogus. The plans are there already, use the plans that we have there. We cannot allow our healthcare system to be treated like breadcrumbs for pigeons. We cannot, we cannot do better. We can do better in St Lucia, and all of us must act. Now, they tell me it's time for me to finish, but we must all act, and I hope you, the citizens of this country, get up, get up your laurels, get up, stand up for your right. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Belarus. But you know, what is, Fortuna kept making reference to the question that I asked in Vifort, and I have been accused of calling the Prime Minister names. And I am not responsible for the response that was given. He is responsible, because by his own action, he is being judged. And you have a Prime Minister in office today and a government, the St Lucia Labour Party government, who has no plan. And that is so much in evidence when we talk about the St Jude's Hospital. Here we are, a government borrowing two hundred and one million dollars, they say to complete the hospital. Ask them, and of course us to fix the stadium. Ask them, how much will be spent on the hospital? They do not know. How much will be spent on the stadium? They do not know. So how did you arrive at that two hundred and one million? They do not know. And so, the Prime Minister's response was that they have not gone through the bidding process. So if everybody who bids, say, they bid, they bid three hundred million, so go buy your contractor, that means you have no idea how much it's going to cost yourself. From the preliminary stages of a project, you have an estimate of how much that project is going to cost. And if you don't, it tells us something about you. That is the kind of government you have in office today. So if you do not have a plan, you do not have a future. And with the United Workers' Party, we have a vision, we have a plan, and we have a future for St Lucia. So now, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to call on our mobilization officer who hails from this community. She has been doing great work with and for the party, and I am sure you are ready, more than ready, to hear a delivery from Mrs. Nancy Charles, who is from this constituency. Nancy, please step up.
Good evening, my flabou family! I got a message that says I need to acknowledge the diaspora, our people in the UK, in Texas, in New York, wherever you are, let me say, good evening to you as well. And we are so grateful, there are some faces here that I want to say to you, you know who you are, every single town hall meeting that we have had from inception, you are here, you need to give yourselves a round of applause for that. Faithful soldiers of the United Workers' Party, we love you, we cherish you, and we really appreciate it. But today, I have to say to you that, I was not planning on speaking, and after discussion with the General Secretary, she says, this is your constituency, you need to say something. And this morning, I have to say, I, I wrote down something, I hardly ever have a speech, but I thought if I'm going to speak, I just want to make sure that I say what I have to say. So tonight, I'm not going to be shouting, and tonight, I'm not going to be doing any pekong. So you probably will not stand up and jump and wellele tonight, because, you see, tonight I have a serious message, and I'll tell you why. I, I, I have to say that in Creole. Some people say, eh, it's over twenty-six years I'm a farmer, never stop and never will, okay? That is the strength of a woman. I'm a hard-working woman, not only in the United Workers' Party, but at my home and in my community. And so I thought that I should write what... Today, today is not really a happy day. It's not a happy day for St Lucia. And today, United Workers' Party, we are not here to celebrate, because there's nothing to celebrate in St Lucia. And the Prime Minister is the one who said that UWP waking up and we sleeping, hoping that things go bad. And maybe he is under the impression that we are having these town hall meetings to celebrate the demise of the country, but I want to say to him that this is not so. No patriotic St Lucian will ever celebrate when crime is on the increase, when misery is on the increase, when people cannot pay their bills or feed their families, and when young people are unemployed, no St Lucian will celebrate that. So, Mr. Prime Minister, get it right. And when almost a billion dollars has been borrowed with nothing to show in this country, nobody can celebrate. When pit bulls that turn into mongrel are running the country, and politicians are pilfering the state's resources and assets for their friends, their families, and their comrades, nobody can celebrate that. So we're not here to celebrate, Prime Minister Pierre. And I know you are listening, and if you are not listening, Monday is listening and recording for you. And if Monday is not listening, Alison Joseph must be listening. But the message will get its owner. So today, I am here to talk not only to you, the audience, but I am here to talk to all right-thinking St Lucians in general. And yes, I may be standing on a UWP platform, but my appeal to you is don't look at the messenger, but ponder on the message tonight. And the message is that our country is in trouble. That's the message. We are going down the drain, and we are going down fast, and St Lucia, we need to stop the bleed. It does not matter if you are a supporter of the Labour Party or even a supporter of the flabou party. It does not matter if you voted for Labour in the last election or if you never voted. You are a St Lucian just like me. And if nothing else, I want you to be objective, and you must admit that things not nice in St Lucia. Everywhere I go, people are telling me that this country is not doing well. We have a clown for the leader of this country, we have a liar as his deputy, and we have a mongrel pulling the strings with a bunch of corrupt men and women supporting them. Even the women, my people that are elected, are no different. Because you know why? So it is a sad day in St Lucia, when everything that was bad for Labour Party in opposition, everything that they criticized... But today, they are in government, and everything is good. The hypocrisy of the St Lucia Labour Party. Yes, there are some of them. And by now, if we do not realize that we were duped by Richard Frederick on his talk show every Thursday night, and by Philippe J. Pierre, then bal fini, viel longa sac st Lucia, and fini exa. Look at what is happening in our country. How is it possible for our government minister, in one breath, to say that land in Castries is valued at one thousand dollars a square foot? What did answer? He didn't say a hundred, he didn't say two hundred. He said that it is valued at one thousand dollars a square foot. And he said that when a reporter asked him the question about the space in the CDC, when they demolish it, what is going to happen? And he was very careful to speak about the value of the land. This same man, he's a minister, he's a builder, he knows and understands the value of land, but that same man did not find it wrong with selling beachfront property at twenty-five dollars a square foot to the daughter of one of the Labour Party financiers. You see the hypocrisy in this country? How can that be right? We all know that land appreciates in value. Okay? But land was valued at a particular time, and then they claim and they revalued the land, et que ça vous qui ça, you revalue it, because they wanted to sell it for the individual in question. And they revalued the land at a lower value. But that's not even bad, you know? You know they did not even sell the land at the value it was valued at? They sold the land at a lower value of the revaluation. So I ask the question, who is in charge? Who is in charge in this country? Do we remember that Philippe J. Pierre was the deputy to Kenny Anthony? When Kenny Anthony made all these allegations about Richard Frederick, and yes, I'm coming for Richard Frederick tonight, because... I am missing you, Richard. I want you to talk about me on your talk show on Thursday. So I'm coming for you tonight. I miss him, I want him to talk about me. Vinny? Philippe was there when Kenny said that Richard was the most frightening thing to happen to politics in St Lucia. You all remember when Jeanine Compton, she broke the story that she had gone to Barbados and that she knew that Richard's diplomatic visa and his regular visa has been revoked? You remember how the Labour Party was rejoicing? Moi je sais, because I was there, I was a candidate for that election. So I know, and that is what, let me tell you what Richard said in his resignation letter. This is what he said. He said, "The common goal of my enemies," which is the Labour Party, Kenny Anthony, Philippe J. Pierre, Ernest Hille, Moussa, Alva Baptiste, Yotut, these were his enemies. He said, "The goal of my enemies is to discredit Richard Frederick in the eyes of the electorate and the world. It matters not to them that in their attempts at discrediting me, they are also giving St Lucia an altogether unmerited bad name." That's what he said. They will stop at nothing, and Fortuna told you about the Yodi mentality. Their goal is to stop Richard Frederick at all costs. The lawyers among them have carefully insinuated that... The lawyers have carefully insinuated that I am a money launderer, a woman batterer, a thief, an unscrupulous land speculator, a drug trafficker. That's what he said. They have even implied I was investigated by Scotland Yard in connection with a local murder. So they even accuse him of being a murderer. They are schooled in the demonic art of weaponizing words for the destruction of reputations. So what Fortuna told you earlier on, Richard Frederick said that in his resignation letter in 2011. What has changed? They forced Stephen King to get Richard to resign, and today... And today, nothing has changed but Richard Frederick, the same person they accuse of being a drug trafficker, money launderer, murderer. He is the one running the government of Saint Lucia today. Did you know that? Oh, you didn't know that? What Richard says goes. He is the one in charge of this government. Are we for real in this country? Are we going to sit back and take that and allow these kind of people to continue running our country? I will not take it. I hope you will not take it. Richard comes on his talk show every single Thursday night and he threatens every single citizen that stands up to him. What a thing in Saint Lucia. Nothing. So where is Dr. Kenny Anthony today? Does he think that because he is not in the cabinet that he has absolved us all the things he said about Richard Frederick? Kenny Anthony needs to come out and clear the air about what he said about Richard. He stood on Labour Party platforms with him during the elections. Okay? He never recanted what he said about Richard. And so today, I am asking Dr. Kenny Anthony, "Do you still believe what you said about Richard Frederick back then? And do you still believe it today?" You need to answer the people. He also needs to come out and explain why Richard Frederick is holding a diplomatic visa today in the name of Saint Lucia. Why? But let me tell you a little secret. I have some news for Richard. So Mandy sent that to him. Because I don't think he realized that Philippe J. Pierre set him up. Y'all realize that? Let me tell you. I don't know if you heard it, but Philippe J. Pierre was the one who said... This is what he said. "Richard was overseas on a personal vacation. He paid with his own money. He used his credit card. And he was not on official government business." So my question to the US Embassy and to the Prime Minister, because again I tell you they're listening. According to the US Embassy information, here's what it says. "To qualify for an A1 or A2 visa, which is a diplomatic visa, you must be traveling to the United States on behalf of your national government to engage solely in official activities for the government." The US Embassy website said that. "The fact that there may be government interest or control in a given organization is not in itself the defining factor in determining whether or not an applicant qualifies for the A visa. The particular duties or services to be performed must also be of an inherently governmental character or nature." So government officials traveling to the United States to perform non-governmental functions of a commercial, traveling as stories or personal visa, they require an H, an L, a B1 or a B2 visa. So Richard Frederick went, not on official government business, on his diplomatic visa and has breached the rules of the US diplomatic visa guidelines. And the Prime Minister, I am calling him tonight to answer to these questions. You think he's going to answer? Okay, the chairman said to me he's going to call him and ask him the response. But he's not going to respond. I know he's not going to respond. Because all that matters to him is protecting the victory. Playing politics with the people's money. This is the same man that said that he never said that he would give the people $1,500. And he said, "I dare you, pull out the tape, I never said that." Because he was able to get some financing for him to be able to give some income support. So he got some money from CDB and IADB to give after three years in government. He's into his third term. And he's going to give some support. But I'm telling you, there's no plan to this support. It is just jealousy that Alan Chasney did it, so I want to do it too. That's what this is about. You see, the Prime Minister does not understand that the COVID response was not something that Alan Chasney just put together to give people money. There was a plan. There is always a plan with Alan Chasney. Always. We're not like Pipsa Plan. And every time the Prime Minister opens his mouth, he has to lie. And tell him, "Take me to court because today I am calling him a liar." I have never seen a man who claims... He can fight corruption. He can support corruption. But every other word out of his mouth is a lie. You cannot expect people to take you seriously when you cannot be honest. I can understand that perhaps when you were in opposition, he said something and he says anything. But for Christ's sake, you are in government, Philippe J. Pierre. One phone call, one inquiry before you speak and that will solve the problem. So what did he lie about? The Prime Minister went on his ad about the support, the income support. And this is what he said. He said, "The people did not benefit in any substantial way." "The people did not benefit in any substantial way from the money that the last government took from the NIC to give them. The government had no surpluses. The money that was given to them came from the NIC." That is a lie. Imati. He lied both by saying that the people did not benefit substantially and he lied about where the money come from. So let me remind you. Because I think it was Fortuna Jean-Luc who said that. You know, all what Alan Chasney did, they asked Saint Lucians to crucify him. That's what y'all did. We crucified him. And today, nuka pwefe. So let me give you a reminder. All the facts are there. And you can see it. You can go back. You can go on social media. You can go on government website. You can see right in front of you. And that is why I'm saying that it's a sad day for this country. And the last weeks have been even sadder. It is a shame. It is a shame that we have a Prime Minister that every opportunity he gets, he tries to mama-guy the people. He cannot speak straight. He cannot speak the facts. So here are the facts. Number one, the money that was used to provide income support and other support to non-NIC contributors came from the CDB, the IMF, the World Bank, the EU, the ECCB, and even the Republic of China on Taiwan. You see how many places we had to go and find money at the time to provide support? And a lot of you sitting here got support. A lot of you sitting here got your $1,500 cheque. A lot of you got support from the government. The information is there. He can ask the new Director of Finance the money he brought back in. And he can give him the facts. So we did not borrow any money from NIC to give income support. And both Pips and Shelton Daniel said that on his show the last time. And when we were in the Senate, I corrected him. I said to him, "Shelton, you are saying something that is wrong." But then again, Shelton will always be Shelton. All right. Here's what the NIC paid. So Philippe J. Pierre, if you are listening, this is what the NIC paid. The NIC paid some sort of unemployment benefit to NIC contributors who had lost their jobs or who were sent home because of COVID. That's a lie. NIC paid monies only to persons who contributed to NIC. And so what they did was, if you were on layoff or you lost your job, but you were an NIC contributor, they calculated your last payment and they gave an average salary for three months. And I think initially three months and then they extended some of it to six months. So get it straight, Philippe J. Pierre. And the people who did not contribute to NIC, the vendors, taxi drivers, tour operators, farmers, small shop owners and bar owners, all these people, we used the funds that were borrowed from the NIC and the other facilities to give $500 a month for three months. So each person got $1,500 to help support them. What have Philippe J. Pierre come? What did he do? He put a policy in place, you're going to get a one-time payment of $1,500. But who's going to get that payment? Number one, you need to have a Labour Party card. And you don't have a Labour Party card. Number two, he says that if you are 12 years and younger... But if you are 12 years and younger and you've lost a parent, then somebody can apply for you. That is what the life of a parent is worth in Saint Lucia today. $1,500. Okay? But in addition to that, when he said we didn't benefit substantially, let me remind you. You remember when we had the initial shutdown and the country was shut down for three or four days? Y'all remember that? What did the government do? We went to Massey and other supermarkets and we had grocery bags and we had Nemo and other people delivering to households in Saint Lucia. Grocery items. We gave you food. We gave you toilet paper, disinfectant. Y'all have forgotten that? After that, when we were trying to get our things together in collaboration with the Saint Lucia Hotel Association, we had a feeding program. Every Sunday, the people were going around the island delivering cooked meals to the elderly and people who were in their homes. When that was done, we said this was not enough. We decided to buy ground provisions, fish and chicken from local farmers. And we created food boxes. And for six months, we were giving food boxes every single week around the island of Saint Lucia. Is that not substantial support? We were not done. We realized that some of the poor and indigent, we decided we were going to give them additional support. And we spoke to Lucilek and Wasco. And we gave them support by paying their bills for them. That's what a caring government does. But these were not the only persons who were touched. We touched the business sectors as well. We gave extension for corporate and income tax payment to businesses. And we waived the penalties and interest for late payments for all businesses in Saint Lucia. And as an incentive to encourage them not to lay off or fire people, we said that if you kept all your workers, we gave them a full tax credit of 30% on their taxes. Y'all remember the barrel concession? When we realized how hard things were and people had family overseas who wanted to help, we started the barrel concession six months earlier. We started barrel concessions in June and it went all the way to December, January and February. Is that not substantial support? Philippe J. Pierre. The people who had their loans at the banks and the credit union. You remember we gave them waivers and moratoriums for six months and then extended it to one year? That is substantial support. You remember the people who were renting from government? I can stay all night, you know, to tell you what we did for COVID. The people who were renting from government, the small bars, the shops, the people in the CDCs. You remember the government gave them a waiver of rental so that they didn't have to pay rent for a couple of months from the government? That's not substantial support. And there were concessions for importation. If you were importing sanitary items, masks, sanitizer, all those things, there was duty-free concessions. All these things and more we did. So send a message to the Honorable Prime Minister Philippe J. Pierre that when you're talking about substantial support, $1,500 doesn't cut it. That's not a plan. Every citizen was touched. So you see, there was a plan. This was not about politics. But what Philippe J. Pierre is doing is about politics. This was about the people. So do not come and smile because you now try nothing. So Chasney did it. So I can do it too. I want to try and follow in his footsteps. That will not pay. If you really want to follow Chasney's footsteps, go and finish all the projects that Alan Chasney started. This is the most uncaring government we have ever had in Saint Lucia. And I can certainly tell you that Philippe J. Pierre will go on as the worst Prime Minister ever in the history of Saint Lucia. So ask yourself, is my life better today than it was on July 26, 2021? Is your life better? Is the country better? Are we heading in the right direction in this country? Are you safer in this country than you were two years ago? My people from the South, are you satisfied with the performance of the government in your community? Are you happy about the fact that this government has made it very clear that we in the South, we don't deserve world class? We certainly don't deserve best. Are you happy about that? I met a little red cap man. I have five minutes left. And I gave him a ride. And he was telling me... I mean, how can... Let me tell you something. I got a live. I have to digress a little bit. Sorry, Skinny, you'll give me two minutes more. I got a WhatsApp message on my phone this afternoon. Now, I am giving you notice. I have not done a Facebook Live, never. But I will be doing a Facebook Live. That is one thing that Saint Lucians and Viewfossians should do and you should never, ever attend that race. And this is not about the fellas who own horses in Viewford. I feel sorry for them. Because they were duped. Y'all remember when we came up with the plan and Alan Chasney said, "We have all that land, they're doing nothing. And we can have a world-class racehorse facility in there." And the track was built. The track was built and we had a race. Y'all remember that? It was on television and all over the world. "World-class horse racing in Saint Lucia." Concerned citizen, Cornelia Jacob, Jelias James, a whole bunch of them, they protested and said we're giving away our lands. They did not want what was world-class. Ek hodi jou, zoni Mister Reno. Mister Reno yo ka ku ye ya chalma. Atalma Reno es e goma pipi setli si. Mister Reno is grading a track for us, for us to have horse racing. Exo vle mo vina sa? Y'all have left a world-class facility sitting there. From the time y'all came into government, y'all have tried every single thing to run out Yoakin and his team out of Saint Lucia. Ek atalma, zo vle monai pisé abagomla, ai kakabagomla, ai du buton la, bou, pou di jo ka fe horse racing track by Javi Fau. We don't want it! Mene imu te castris a castris is. Nous pas vle viè fa. We already have a facility in Viewford. But that's what we have been degraded to. Abawa je. That's what we deserve in the South. Why would any leader look at a modern, climate-resilient facility with world-class amenities and say that he will park it aside and spend $200 million on an 80-year-old facility? So we don't deserve a facility. Tens a facility, I ne you know. Here's what, my people. I want you to listen carefully and Saint Lucians, listen. This is what the United Workers' Party was building. A facility with a helipad and an elevator. Ek helicopter landale. Le yo me ya le stretcha, yo ka me ya da elevator and you go straight down to the emergency room. Don't we deserve that in Saint Lucia? Don't we deserve a facility that had at least 10 private rooms for persons who can afford and deserve their privacy? Don't we deserve a facility that had special areas for specialization like cancer treatment and other world treatments? Don't we deserve that kind of facility right here in Viewford? Don't we deserve a facility that has all the patient services on the one roof? And Dr. Wilson said it very clearly. 25 buildings, okay? 25 buildings. 25 buildings all over the place. And that is what you're telling us, we deserve. So long shot fe ultrasound ek a extra la. Un pou mache, si sa la wheelchair, un pou wheelchair gis la. But we had a facilities, one floor down, one floor up. Everything in one go. Nobody deserves that. The facility that has cladding material that is fireproof, but it also keeps the heat out and it keeps the cold in. So we'll spend less money on air conditioning. Don't we deserve a facility like that? And the materials of the facility help reduce condensation and so it reduces the possibility of mold. So when some people want to say, what is so modern about the facility? I want to ask you a question. Which other facility in Saint Lucia, other building in Saint Lucia has any of those properties? Which one? None. But we don't deserve that. My people, the Labour Party says they care and I'm wrapping up. Has this government gone to Parliament to pass one piece of legislation that will better the lives of Saint Lucia? One. But they go to Parliament and they increase the tax on you by 2.5%. They say Chastney did not care about you. He didn't care about the little man. He's a white man. He cannot empathize with the little people. But it's the same Alan Chastney that removed the 2.5% on the VAT and Labour Party come back and they put it right back. So who cares about you? When Alan Chastney increased the school feeding program and the bus subsidy, it was for you. When he wiped away the debt that you owed St. Jude's and V H. Y'all remember that? Monsieur gua mun pate sa iwe dokte. Shakti lawi ve St. Jude, muesa dousa. Lawi ve St. Jude, pou me ba yo ka do. Oh, the bill you have there, you have to clear the bill. You were embarrassed, you couldn't go to the hospital because they're telling you about the past bill and you need to see the doctor. Alan Chastney and his government said, I want you to have access to healthcare. And we wiped away the debt. That was for you. What has the Labour Party done for you? People are complaining about the money they have to pay for a little barren. I saw it all during before back to school. Jole ba, yo ta le Facebook. Quarrelling and complaining about how much money they have to pay for a barren. They have to pay taxes, duties, service charge. But you have Ernest Ele sitting in Parliament. Lekini tout la jeun, ipa rapay tax ala motoka. Wicked government. And the cost of everything is going up in this country. My people, we have to take to the streets. We have to march and we have to walk in this country and we have to take our placards and we have to send a strong message to the Saint Lucia Labour Party to tell them that enough is enough. So if you are suffering, come and march with us. We will give you the date soon and we will give you the time. If you are not working, come and march with us. If you think the price of fuel is too high, come and march with us. If you think the cost of living is too high in this country, come and march with us. If you are not happy about St. Jude's and where this is going, come and march with us. If your children are suffering, come and march with us. Take to the streets, Saint Lucia. Nous vle ja castris vini. Nous vle ja babo no vini. Nous vle ja grozi le vini. Nous je vle castris east, sa constituency pip vini. Je sou fouye vini. Je sou azai vini. We want everybody to come and march with the United Workers' Party. We need to take to the streets and let your voice be heard because this is the only language that Saint Lucia Labour Party understands. Thank you and good night.
Thank you very much Nancy. Now, I want to thank the over 1,000 viewers who are following this town hall meeting live. At the same time, I want to express my sympathies to the 95 people who are following Joakim Town Hall Meeting in Castris Southeast. They got to 95, but right now we are over 1,000. That tells you something. You're not fooling the people anymore and people are not listening to their nonsense anymore. We know where the action is. We know where the hope lies and we know where the future of this country lies. The United Workers' Party. And ladies and gentlemen, I monitored your reaction when Nancy said very soon we will have you to come and march with us. And she gave you many of the reasons why you have to come and march with us. And she mentioned the constituencies, Grozilly everywhere. But when she said Castris East, there's another reason why you have to come and march with us. Because ma, Jihavat Banuwa Bo Prime Minister. You have to come and march with us. All the embarrassment that your representative is causing Saint Lucia. And you know, I'm sending a message once more to Philippe P A. At every meeting, I have called for some resignation from him. I started with calling for his resignation as Minister of National Security. He laughed at that. I asked subsequently for his resignation as Minister of Finance. Ebe usab kisa, atalman akwe pou resign as Prime Minister. Because, because the kind of buffoonery that we're seeing coming from a man who calls himself our Prime Minister is intolerable and embarrassing to this country. And we want no more of that. Isamotka espe, le pip kute setli si, oh go catastrophe. Ek se betis laika pa liya, si le otka go bon. The man is an embarrassment. And he is bringing shame to this nation. We want him out of the way. And what did you all expect, Saint Lucia? A man who has followed all his life. He became a professional follower. And based on that, you thought he could have led? And guess who he was following? Kenny Anthony. You know? And so I am not surprised. We tried to tell Saint Lucia, but you wouldn't listen. But if you didn't listen, now you see. Okay, now that you're seeing and you're feeling, it is time to do something about it. So I want to extend an invitation to the Labourites who have regretted the decision that they have made to vote the Labour Party to come and join with us in the match and take back your vote, take back your country and give Saint Lucia a future once again. Now ladies and gentlemen, I am going to call on the party chairman, Mr. Thurl Prudential, who is going to address you. Mr. Prudential, please come forward.
Thank you, thank you. Wow. This place is on fire. That means that I won't be on fire, but I'll be enough to put some, you know, fire in Philippe P A's backside. That's Thurl Prudential, vintage Thurl Prudential. I have made no apology for it. You know, I'll say something here. Dominic di that yo ka imete levy as sou, shabon. Yo vwe toutze levyo pou etende fe. Try pou di nu Dominic mati. Ek nu vini sad, se yo ki mati. Wa abesan, mo leka mangea halls. Mo leka mangea a hall halls. Wa abesan mo pe because ma sa si yo ka ime levy as sou hall do mo. So abesan, ngai po, ngai po second choa mete ambush mo. Avan Philippe P A mete levy as sou hall mo. Folks, tonight, I want to seriously address you. And I want to start by saying, we need more of you as members of the United Workers' Party than supporters of the United Workers' Party. And so, starting this week, I implore you, I encourage you to become members of the U W P as opposed to becoming supporters of the U W P. And moving forward, I'm going to instruct our general secretary, every Sunday we must bring application forms for persons who need to become members of the United Workers' Party. And we are going to put it somewhere where they can find it and they can fill it out, give it to their chairs or send it to the secretariat and we can take it from there. Are you with me? Good. Because, kalte, kalte man ye ba gay kali. The way this war is going to be waged, the United Workers' Party needs enough shoulders for us to stand on. And if we are going to bring down that wall of Jericho, it means that we have to have enough people at force existence. Are you with me? Enough persons below to hold those of us that are trying to go up to bring down that labour wall of Jericho. Are you with me? Okay. Now, I want, I started something yesterday on my show Point Blank and I'll give you part two tonight in a few minutes. And it's called The Misery Is Real. You know, Ernest Ele stood in the House of Assembly and openly and unabashed disclosed to us, the citizens of this country, how the decision for the 2.5 levy came about. And I am sure none of you, none of you took notice of that. I repeat, none of you took notice as to how they came about putting together this 2.5 levy. And so tonight, I want publicly to disclose that by making sure we can listen to the tape. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise to express my support.
Something happened? I want you to listen to that tonight, it's important. Because it is a secret that happened on that day.
First on the estimates on the budget statement presented by Prime Minister, where I appeal for governments to give dedicated focus for the state of healthcare in Saint Lucia. Just probably even before the estimates, Mr. Speaker. I had expressed my experience as a parliamentarian, where on numerous occasions, I had to see persons who came to me looking for assistance.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so you heard it for yourself. On numerous occasions, he had the experience of many of his supporters coming to ask him for assistance for healthcare-related issues. And so suddenly, he had this bright idea that if they are going to ask me for money to pay for these healthcare services, I may as well tax every citizen here in this country. Are you listening to me? I did not make up that story. Can we listen one more time? Can we listen one more time? Listen to this.
To my colleagues in here. Minister, my support for the bill as presented by the Prime Minister and member for Castris East. Mr. Speaker, I stood in this house during the debate, first on the estimates and then on the budget statement presented by Prime Minister, where I appeal for governments to give dedicated focus for the state of healthcare in Saint Lucia. Just probably even before the estimates, Mr. Speaker. I had expressed my experience as a parliamentarian, where on numerous occasions, I had to see persons who came to me looking for assistance.
Okay, thank you. So you heard it yourself tonight, that what prompted the levy, the 2.5 levy, was because he was becoming annoyed with the amount of supporters that were coming to him to seek assistance for medical purposes. You heard that for yourself tonight. So now tonight, it's open, clear to everyone why this levy was instituted or instituted because Ernest Ele got fed up with people coming to him to ask for financial assistance. And so the decision was made to tax not just his supporters, but the entire country. Are you with me? Okay? So in other words, let them pay for their indiscretion. Because if you are going to come to me, I may as well make you pay for healthcare in this country. Okay? So you're looking at a pattern of abuse, a pattern of wickedness, a pattern of heartless individual who was elected on the premise of putting people first, suddenly decided it is better. it is better to tax them than for me to find money to give to them. Okay? Now, let's look at this. The impact on inflation. The impact of inflation on the citizens of this country. Daily, you go to the supermarket. It's not easy, and all of us know that. You may want to buy cough drops for the children, but you end up having to buy pampers instead because you cannot afford that cough drop. You may want to go and buy milk, but because your grandmother or mother suffers from hypertension, you are forced to ignore the milk and instead buy the stuff for the hypertension. This is the reality of what we face here in this country. And so, the Saint Lucia Labour Party talks about universal healthcare. But what is universal healthcare? Universal healthcare à la labour is what you call rationing of healthcare. Because you will only get a little bit, but you have to be 80 years old for you to even touch a little bit. So for the rest of us who are not 80, think about it. If you are in your 50s, you are going to have to live for another 30 years for you to get there. If you are 40, God help you if you ever get to 80 years old. Now, if you look at, for example, unemployment, how do you ask unemployed folks to pay for healthcare? Vous parlez l'argent. Vous parlez travail. Tu mets l'argent puis tu as mon bail. C'est ça que vous voulez, taxe-vous. Taxe-vous. Taxe-les on anything that you claim is levy. Is that fair to you, the people of Saint Lucia? Is that fair to us, the citizens of this country? You see? And that is why. That is why it is so very important that we do what we have to do, which is to remove this government from the seat of governance here in this country. Are you with me? Thank you. Now, let's look at this. When you claim that you want to tax the poor, before you tax the poor, you mean to tell me a government with so many PhDs, a government with so many graduate degrees, a government with so many DDDs behind their name, a government with all kinds of PPP behind their names could not see it fit to look into other ideas before they tax the poor? Well, guess what? They have failed to realise that healthcare and security are long-term commitments and priority to our nation. And it's not an overnight thing. It is something that will continually be, what you say, ongoing, ongoing. And so, you would need monies to be able to support such a programme. But guess what? Before they ever made that awful decision, why didn't they think of telling Richard Frederick, "Don't sell the Banans Bay for $25 a square foot"? You wonder why I say that? Because if they were smart, they would have thought to themselves, "We can develop if Slasper does not want to develop Banans Bay. We can find a rich investor that can develop Banans Bay for us." So when you sell it at $25 a square foot, think of the amount of money and the return after that investment had been done to be able to develop Banans Bay. You would have a lot of money coming to you annually where you could be able to pay for health and security in this country. Am I right? It makes sense? But it's a government that is clueless. It's a government with no ideas. It's a government that is quick to tax the poor as opposed to looking at other remedies whereby we could be able to rescue the poor, pick them up from the state of abject poverty, and help them become citizens that have a little bit of something here in this country. But the saying says, "That vote Labour, you will die poor." And that is the truth. Vous votez Labour, vous pouvez m'en aller. Vous passez encore. You cannot get up. You understand? Now, let's look at that. You can give your ports to every foreigner, but you took your port and allowed Richard Frederick to sell it to Renault's daughter for $25 a square foot? This is prime real estate. You could be making tons of money over time with that, where you could have been able to pay for health and security and not apply a levy on those who are already destitute. Are you with me? You know, I'll tell you something. Tonight, I want to do something very quickly. And that is to put some common sense ideas in the head of Peter Philip. Peter, sorry, Peter Philippe. Yes. Put some, that's how much of an idiot I think he is. So I don't even remember his name. You understand? But I want to put some common sense ideas into his head. And I'll start by saying, how about turning our attention to the cost of operating Saint Lucia's embassies and counsulates abroad? In my view, many may disagree with me, but this is the largest non-productive, low-yielding bureaucratic investment out of Saint Lucia. Okay? So the cost of travel, subsidies, and expenses by government ministers annually totaling close to 20 million US dollars. And you wonder, what are the returns for that? What are the returns for operating an embassy abroad? What are the returns for spending so much money when there are causes like the health and security, where some of that money could be channeled back home to pay for it? Now, let's look at this. Look at the cost of renting for the embassies and counsulates abroad. 20,000 US dollars a year. If Philippe a month, if Philippe was sensible, what would he do? If he would have, he would approach Antigua. He would approach Saint Vincent. He would approach Dominica and Antigua and ask them, "Folks, we are part of the OECD. How can we find lower-cost housing to be able to keep our embassies afloat? And take the rest of that money because we now have shared space, so we can bring that money back to Saint Lucia to pay for the health and security levy that they put on." Are you with me? Am I making sense? Good. Now, look at the cost of housing. Look at the cost of housing and ambassador in New York. Almost 15,000 US dollars per month. So if you make the maths, this is 180,000 US dollars a year. Monies that could make a lot of sense here because that US dollar is 2.67. Alright? And you can do the maths and you could see where we could be blocking holes there and helping the health and security. You know, we must find a way to restructure our entire operations abroad immediately. And to usher a modern system of diplomacy that produces trained diplomats whose primary focus is not to attach themselves to international causes, but who are capable of using their position to attract jobs, scholarships, back to our shores here in Saint Lucia. Are you with me? So, we need to be able to have our foreign facilities operated on a cost-effective system whereby a lot of the wastage, a lot of the money that goes into the parties, a lot of the monies that goes into chauffeur-driven, you know, limousines, are brought back home so that we can use. Now you say UWP should not give them advice, but we are more superior, so we ought to give them advice because they don't have a brain. So because Labour don't have a brain, don't expect us not to give them advice from time to time. And let me tell them, to those who say we don't love our country, you cannot say UWP don't always give you advice. We always do. Because nous pas en wager pour nous viens pouvoir. There's only an urgency for us to come back to office because this government is ruining our country. And we understand if we have to wait any longer, we are going to be in deeper trouble. So we are giving them advice along the way. Now, these are a few of the many common sense ideas that I am giving tonight for cut-cutting measures within our government. And you know, if this SLP government is wise, they will listen to my message tonight and realise that if you love this country, if you love Saint Lucia, you must do things in the interest of the country and the people of Saint Lucia. I will say one thing. We need to cope the wastage spending by agreeing to an internal audit of the vast and expensive diplomatic bureaucracy that is ours. We need to have an audit of this vast bureaucratic government that we run abroad, a part of our government, representation of our government. I will say also, finally, if Philippe is truly serious about dealing with the island's deficit and its economic challenges, they must learn to tap into the vast network of Saint Lucia's students studying abroad in the fields such as international relations, international business, marketing, and who are capable of being utilized in our missions and counsulate on a voluntary or internship basis. Are you hearing me? And if they want me to put them in touch with those persons, they can contact me because I'm Mr. Diasborough. We can give it to them. So, tonight is a challenge to this government. I'm speaking to you not in a jokey way, but in a serious way. This is my area. Government and politics, international relations. This is my forte. And tonight, I felt it was important for us to expose part of the wastage that is happening abroad that we none of us talk about. And only one thing I said to Alan Chasney and the United Workers' Party. When we come back to office and you decide to appoint an ambassador, make sure they are mandated to return to Saint Lucia every six months to give a stewardship of what they do up there. Explain to us. Explain to us. Yes. Give us answers. Nous que payer l'argent bah où pour présenter cette liste ici l'autre pays. Nous ni vous savez qui ça ou qu'a fait banous. And we must not be afraid to have them interrogated in parliament because this is truly transparency. Yes, truly transparency. So, I am saying once again, and I am going to call on the United Workers' Party when the time is right, that we have to ensure that whoever we appoint to represent our country abroad is mandated to come back home and give an account of the stewardship. You with me? Right. Because how do you run a government that will stay for five years, 10 years, 15 years? And when they are done, you did not get anything from your ambassador? No jobs? No scholarship? Ah, yeah? And all they do is enjoy the perks of living abroad. But when they're abroad, I can tell you, they're not thinking, most of these Labourites aren't thinking of the people of Saint Lucia. It's the best life that they have ever had until the Labour Party is removed from government. Could you imagine you have people like Lanzico, Peter Lanzico? You wonder, he say he have degrees in government and politics, blah, blah, blah. Je ne sais pas, il n'y a ni degré sans wit. Woman, you need degree sans wit. And what I mean by this is, si le bar pas en pouvoir, c'est beaucoup la passagé même. But we in the UWP, we are different. We are conservative in our ways. We have a conservative philosophy. And that means the poorest UWP in here, when their party is not in power, they know how to make their icicle and ice lolly and go out and sell and hustle. But not those Labourites. Not those individuals. They have to wait for Labour to come for them to eat. But UWP's, what we do, qui ça moi faire? Après flambeau perd l'élection, moi foutais comme moi un femme moi et moi mettais comme moi travail. This is the kind of people we are. And when I knew nothing about farming, on dirait moi s'il, moi juste savoir que registered farmer. Yes. Registered farmer. Ça c'est comme moi, mon gars, moi appuie. Because I realised I'm not going to stay in the struggle and don't work for myself. I understood that for me to help the United Workers' Party, I must be able to tomorrow to come and give them a penny out of what I am making. This is what we do. And folks, tonight, I will end by saying to you, we have to win the next elections. We have to win the next elections. And I am saying to you, you're not only wanting to win the next elections for yourself because it's not about us. It's about Saint Lucia and the direction in which this government is taking us. And so, I appeal to you for unity. I appeal to you for peace. I appeal to you for tolerance of other fellow UWP's. And I appeal to you to continue to support your executive because they are the standard-bearers for our party, working and trying to push this party forward. And so, I said to you, "Join the fight. Join this rebellion fight." I'm not going to ask you to burn anybody's place down, but we know our fight is at the polls. That is where we are going to defeat them. This is where we are going to defeat them. So, come next elections when we force them to ring the bell. Because you know, it's not about Philippe anymore. This thing is about UWP. Nous que demand qui le nous fait bells à la ring. Et le nous demand, bells à la ring. All of us will be out there demanding that he call the next elections. Because this is what's going to happen. And so, I am appealing to you. I am appealing to you that you have to be ready. You have to be ready for that fight. I don't want my 80-something-year-old mother to pass away before she sees a UWP victory again in this country. to pass away before she see a UWP victory again in this country. And so when she's gone, because she did her work for the UWP already, when she's gone, at least she can sleep in peace knowing that this government is under Alan Chasney and the United Workers' Party. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And ladies and gentlemen, you are hearing the call and I hope you are responding to the call. The time for action has come. You must take a stand for your country. You must do something for the future of your children. We cannot continue with this government because if we don't take a stand now, later, there'll be nothing to fight for. It is almost half-term. And we have seen the destruction and the demise of Saint Lucia in that short space of time. We cannot continue on the trajectory that they have taken us. We must do something to end the slide. You have a prime minister who is failing, who doesn't even have a clue what he is doing. He doesn't even know what is going on. I mean, so many times he's been asked questions and as prime minister, he is not even aware of what's taking place in the country. So that is not the type of government you want. A government with no plan, with no ideas, with no vision. We're looking for a government that will bring Saint Lucia back on a path and a course of progress and development. So you heard the chairman. We're moving right along now. We're going into the political leadership of the party. And let me just welcome Senator Herod Stanislas. And let me just say that tonight, we will hear from both of the deputy political leaders of the party. At this juncture, I will first bring on Senator Dominic Ferry to address you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mama Iflabo. Now, I'm in a very, very good mood tonight. Before I get into the fireworks, I want to say thank you to all of you. You know why I say thank you? I say thank you because when I think back of our movement two years ago, on that night of the 26th of July 2021, and I watched on television and I see our wall in Castries Southeast, I see Guy fall, I say wah. I see Herod in Soufret. I see Spider in Grozley. I heard a Labour motorcade celebrating tiqua, tiqua. And I say wah, we have lost. But you know what, Mama Iflabo, that this lesson of defeat has taught me? That even though we were down, we were never out. You see, the United Workers' Party has some of the most resilient and strongest supporters. And because of your resilience, because of the strength that you have shown, Philip J. Pierre and the Labour Party are confused, are under pressure, and they don't know what to do. They are making silly mistakes. Instead of governing the country, they are watching our town hall meetings and trying to copy our meetings and be like us and follow us, but they cannot be like us. So Mama Iflabo, I want to thank you. I watched these town hall meetings grow from Babano was the first one. And then we had a handful of people. And then we went to the valley and the crowd get bigger. And then we went to Ancillary Cannaries and the crowd get bigger. And then we went to Soufret and the crowd get bigger. And then we went to Miku North and we had no place to put people. And that said to me that Flabot supporters are ready for the victory. And so in a way, you have created history for the United Workers' Party. When I speak to the older people like Guy and like Spider, they say to me, the United Workers' Party has never been this active in opposition this early. So Mama Iflabo, I really want to thank you for inspiring me. I really want to thank you for giving me oxygen and encouragement to keep going. When I look around our diaspora and I see that now we have a New York caucus, we have a Canadian caucus, we have a London caucus, we even have a Dubai caucus. Mama Iflabo, we are on the road to victory. So we must continue this great mobilization which we have started. We must continue to fight. We must continue to show the Labour Party that we are ready to take our country back. We must continue to march. We must continue to call the radio station. We must continue to tell our friends, our neighbors, our workmates that the United Workers' Party is back and we are ready for business and we are ready to govern again. That's what you have said to Saint Lucia. This is a pivotal message that you have sent. You know, the next election is going to be the most important election in the history of our country's history. And we must stand and we must save this country and free it from the failed policies of Philip J. Pierre and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And so I thank you. Now, tonight, I have a very simple advice to the Saint Lucia Labour Party. My advice is, as we are here in Viewfort, is that they need to apologize to the people of the South. They have betrayed the people of the South. You know, ever since I was growing up, I heard of Viewfort, the new frontier of economic development. Economists and planners and developers looked at Viewfort with its enormous potential, an international airport, a deep-water harbor, hundreds of hectares of undeveloped lands. But most importantly, thousands of the most incredible people that you can find anywhere in the world. And all of that with great support to the Labour Party for the majority of our political history in the two Viewforts and in Labbury. And what have they done for the majority of the times that they have been representing this constituency? They have failed the people over and over and over. They have failed the people of the South and the time has come for an apology. Apologize, Labour Party, to the people of the South. I drove through this community today with Nancy and I look at the rich potential there is for agriculture. The sitting rep has been a minister of agriculture. And in this constituency, you have the most abandoned farmlands anywhere in Saint Lucia. Moussa, you must apologize to the people of the South. To Dr. Anthony, you have played gas tank politics for too long in Viewfort South and so you have not brought any economic activity that's sustainable. And so time has catch up with you. We have now presided over the biggest crime problem we have seen in the history of the South. Apologize to the people of the South. An apology is necessary. So much potential, so much strength. But yet the Labour Party has squandered their political advantage, their vote advantage, and all the enormous potential that it has had. Now, I'm not going to talk about St. Jude's because Guy is coming next and he's going there. We are a team within the United Workers' Party. We don't fight each other down. We work together because we know when divided we fall, united we stand. And that's how we're going to defeat Labour coming in the next election. Mama Iflabo, we are in trouble. We are in trouble. I remember that in the inception of the stewardship of this government, Philip J. Pierre, everything you ask him, he blamed Covid or he blamed the Ukraine war. But what he established then, he said to us that there was a global inflation problem that is affecting the country. Y'all remember that? Philip told us that because Ukraine provides a significant portion of the world's food supply, that food prices everywhere, in big countries, in medium-sized countries, and in small countries, were being affected because of the Ukraine war. And so one would have thought that the Labour Party under Philip J. Pierre would have understood that general household prices in this country have gone sky-high. One would have thought that the Labour Party would have had a conscience to not allow bread to go up on the backs of the people of this country. One would have thought that the government would have created more subsidies so that LPG cooking gas would not double in its price, becoming among the highest it has been in the history of this country. One would have thought that Philip J. Pierre would have subsidized gas so that it would have been below the $14 that it was under the United Workers' Party. One would have thought that the Labour Party would never allow bus fares to go up on the backs of the people of this country. One would have thought that Philip would have had the goal to at least make good on his promise to the hundreds of St. Lucians who are struggling today with the high prices of goods in the supermarket with the promise $1,500. It took him quite a long time to get there. One would have thought, Mama Iflabo, that Philip J. Pierre, who says that his government is the government of the poor, that they would have appreciated that the prices of food has gone sky-high. In fact, what we got was a prime minister whose economic plan to deal with the global inflation crisis was watch what you eat and eat what you watch. And so while we had Alan Chasney, who was responding to the Covid crisis and instituted a masterful economic plan to make sure that the people of Saint Lucia would have had the ability to overcome the difficulties of high unemployment, of high gas prices, of high cost of living that was brought about by Covid. Philip J. Pierre has squandered the lessons, the blueprint that was left for him in the Ministry of Finance and he has now taken us back, according to the young man that spoke tonight, to the tea boutique style of economic management. And so Mama Iflabo, we have this inflation problem. And one of the things I will not blame the Labour Party for is the inflation problem because the inflation problem is a global inflation problem. It's a global issue that's affecting consumers everywhere you go in the world. That's a fact. But what we have seen is that other Caribbean countries like St. Kitts and like Grenada have done a better job at managing this global inflation problem than Saint Lucia has. And so in Philip's own economic and social review, he says that the global inflation problem is the third highest it is in the eastern Caribbean than it is in all of the islands. Saint Lucia has recorded the third highest in cost of living in the rising supermarket prices. So while Grenada and St. Kitts have gone to their citizens and said, look, you can import food and there will be no tax or no VAT or no environmental levy coming through the ports. Or they have said that, look, we will reduce the excise tax on gas. This government has picked up the highest number in excise tax in any administration while they allow the price of gas to go sky-high. Now, they have also picked up the greatest level of tax revenue that the country has ever seen. One would have thought that with all of those taxes and with all of that money which Philip is picking up, that there was no need for a 2.5% tax on the backs of the people of Saint Lucia. So rather than dealing with the cost of living, rather than dealing with all of the issues that is affecting you, Philip J. Pierre's solution to this was to put a 2.5% tax. Now, when we debated this in the parliament, we said to them that this 2.5% tax will affect the cost of food. They said, no, because food is on the exempted list of items. And we indicated to them, we said, look, even though food is on the exempted list of items, that because you're carrying on the cost of CPJ, of Massey Stores and Ultramart, they will pass on the increased cost for the ordinary working people of Saint Lucia. The end consumers will have to pay the increased cost which you have created for those businesses. And so they said, no, that can never happen. We had a notice from KFC and we read the notice in the parliament. And we said, look, here is KFC saying that they will increase the price of food, chicken, on the backs of the people. And KFC in its notice has said it is because of the 2.5% levy. Digicel had a similar letter. In fact, the National Housing Corporation has since put out a similar letter to say that their tenants can expect that the rental fees will go up by 2.5%. And so we told them as well that the charcoal tax or the charcoal will attract the 2.5% tax. Philip said to a journalist in the cabinet briefing that this was impossible and they are not perfect and he will go ahead and amend the legislation and so that he will remove the cost of charcoal. On that same day, from the office of the prime minister, they said that it wasn't on charcoal that is local, but it's on charcoal that's imported. Now, who is Philip J. Pierre and the Labour Party trying to fool? Who are you trying to fool? There is nowhere in the law where it says or it made a distinction between imported or local charcoal. Charcoal is charcoal and you have placed a tax on the backs of the charcoal producers of the country. So stop fooling the people. So his promise to amend the legislation is not enough. The time has come now for Philip J. Pierre to scrap the 2.5% levy altogether. This is bad news for businesses. This is bad news for the workers of this country. This is bad news for people who are shopping. How are you going to tax an old man with a walking stick? How are you going to tax someone going to DBS for an advertisement? for an advertisement, for a death announcement? That's what the levy is going to impose on the backs of people. How are you going to tax someone with a medical fundraiser? You're going to tax them advertising? They're trying to promote a FET to raise funds to go overseas and you're taxing them? And this is a good idea? Come on. How are you going to tax medical equipment? What do you think is going to happen to the cost of private visits to doctors when you increase the price of medical equipment? It's a bad idea. You are making an already bad situation in this country worse. And that's the point. How are you going to find it within you to tax false hair? You know, if you're wearing a weave now and you bought it for $100, the next time you go by Diamond Girl, that weave, that bread will be $102.50 now. How are you going to tax that? Why would you want to tax that? And so, I don't mind being called a liar. That's fine. I don't mind the vilification of the Labour Party. I don't mind their criticism. But St. Lucia cannot take one more day of the St. Lucia Labour Party. And that's what we're saying. You have failed this country. You have let the people of this country down. And if you do not have the answers to govern, then step aside and allow someone else with a plan, with a vision, to govern this country into prosperity. So the tax is a bad idea. And when we march, we must march against the tax. We must march against taxing your pockets. We must march against taxing an old man. We must march against taxing medical equipment. We must march against taxing charcoal. We must march against taxing the barbecue vendor. That's what we must march for. So that's why this election is the most important election because we have a government that is making significant mistakes in this country. Now, we got our order paper this week. And I was told that they are going to Parliament. And we open up the notice and the order paper and we see that the Labour Party is a very stubborn party. One would have thought that after Alan Chastney took them to court and would have won the court battle when the Speaker tried to take him before the Privileges Committee, that they would have learned their lesson. Now, on the order paper, there are two reports that will be laid. And those reports will be laid by the member for Viewford South, Viewford North, this constituency. They set up a committee that included Emma Hippelit, Alvinia Reynolds, Jeremiah Norbert, and Moussa Jabatis from Viewford. They invited Bradley Felix as a lone opposition member. But I'm very proud of Bradley because Bradley said to them, "Look, I want no part of a kangaroo court." And Bradley said, "Look, I am going to stay away and you all have your kangaroo court by yourselves because four against one can never be fair." So you go, all of you hate Alan Chastney. All of you want to get rid of him as the leader of Flabot. All of you want to see him out from Mekud South. And you expect us to believe that Alvinia, that Jeremiah, that Moussa, and Emma can ever, ever be fair? Now, I want to invite my colleague from the constituency near me, Mr. Guy. Because what we would like to do, we would like to, at this moment, tear apart and bring information to you as it relates to this issue. So, Mama Iflabo, we will deal with report number one. Alan Chastney in the Parliament says that congratulations to the member for Castries Central on his three-day visa pass to the UN. Y'all remember that? Now, Brother Guy, you have been in Parliament longer than me. You have seen how these things work. I think you have served in Parliament for three consecutive terms. If you, if a member said that you had a three-day visa pass to go to the States, how would you deal with that?
It's a very simple matter. All you do is you bring the evidence to show that it's not a free-day pass that you had. And given the individual in question that is waving papers every Thursday, you have papers about everybody, it's a simple matter. All Richard has to do and all Philip J. Pierre and the Parliament has to do is to present to Parliament a document of the House which is a photocopy of Richard Frederick's visa when he went to the UN the first time.
End of story. And while we are on documents of the House, if you say you have a diplomatic visa, I think the people of St. Lucia deserves the right to see a copy of the visa.
So, Dominic, we, in St. Lucia, this is not about I don't have a Guy Joseph passport. I have a St. Lucia passport, okay? The passports does not, while it is on our name, it is really state property. When you have a visa, you have a visa as a privilege granted to you by the country. There's nothing obligating a country or forcing a country to grant you a visa. Now, I've said to the Labour Party, you all help Richard lose his visa. If you all help him get his visa, what's the big fuss? So, to tell me you're taking Parliament time, you set special committee. People have to go to meetings, records. You're going to waste Parliament time to come and say he didn't have a free-day visa when all you had to do was just present a visa in Parliament the same time that it happened? So, that is a game. That is a game to attack the democracy of St. Lucia because they have the majority.
Now, I also think, Brother Guy, that what they have to do, the same effort they put into fighting for Richard to get his visa back, they need to fight for every police officer and everybody who lost their visa because of impacts.
Oh, yes. And it is rather unfortunate that some of our dedicated police officers, and I know the US monitors everything that is happening. So I'm hoping that somebody takes this message to the US Embassy. How could you grant Richard a visa that is fingered in the report just like the police officers? And our police officers, who has carried out their duties, cannot get a visa, some of them up to now. Their names have not been cleared. And I believe Philip J. Pierre, Kenny Anthony, and the Labour Party owes it to the police officers of St. Lucia to clear their name, just as they have cleared the name of Richard Frederick.
That was the first matter. Now, we have another matter. Alan Chastney provided a host of documents. And we have one here from the Office of the Director of Audit. And he said to the Parliament that the member for Castries South, the Deputy Prime Minister, and the Minister of Tourism has a joint account with Jafali. Y'all remember that? The Speaker said, "Honourable Member for Mekud South, the Member for Castries South has stood in a point of order and he has said that you are not representing the facts clearly." The leader of the Opposition, a Member for Mekud South, said, "Mr. Speaker, I stand by my word and I will give you the evidence to back up that there is an account that Ernest Hillel and Dr. Jafali are joint signatories to." Now, Brother Guy, let's get some details of that report.
Okay. So, so Dominic, this letter is from the Director of Audit to the Director of Finance, dated February 3, 2021. And the subject is, "Request for Audit Information on Bank Account." And it gives the bank account number 73913546. High Commissioner of St. Lucia, International Maritime Organization, IMO, Mission Account, London. Now, St. Lucians, this is not a game. This is not a first-day-night talk show where they give you half-truths. This is a town hall meeting of the only credible political party in St. Lucia, the United Workers' Party. And the information we are giving you is factual information. Now, here's what the audit found out. The Office of the Director of Audit conducted an audit of the London High Commission in June 2019. The purpose of the audit was to determine whether the operations at the High Commission was in keeping with the requirements of the law that guide the procedures of government operation. The audit covered a period of April 1, 2015, who was in office in April of 2015, to March 31, 2019. We have not completed our audit process nor issued our audit report to the Department of External Affairs. In keeping with audit standards, an exit meeting with the then Deputy Permanent Secretary regarding the key findings of the Embassy as well as the key Embassy staff. Now, I want the people to get everything, Dominic. As part of the audit, none of bank accounts used during the period was tested. And there were five bank accounts. And I have the names and the numbers for all the bank accounts here. Now, now, I want the liars of the Labour Party to come and tell us that's not true because they have a communications specialist who is a communications lying specialist. You remember the young lady who said Dominic lied about the charcoal? And she was posting on social media? So you've been paid by the government of St. Lucia and you go in the Senate where you took an oath and you lied to the people of St. Lucia. But that is what we get when you put children to do big people's work. So let's go. The bank account was opened on the 13th of January 2015 and closed on the 16th of April 2018. Now, hear this. In order to sufficiently audit the bank account, it was necessary to examine other supporting documents in addition to bank statements. Failure, hear what the auditor says? Failure to obtain these documents limited our ability to substantiate expenses and revenues and limited the scope of the audit work. And let me tell you some of the shortcomings. Ernest Hillel, you are crooked and nothing can make you straight. And I want you to challenge Guy Joseph because it's not only on the Range Rover you're crooked. The audit report is saying a lot of things here and I will read a few of them. Here's what. We noted that the account was opened on the 13th of January 2015. Supporting information on the manner in which the account was opened, necessarily approvals for the Department of External Affairs and the Accountant General was not seen at the Embassy.
So he had no approval, no authorization to open the account, not from Alva, not from Kenny. He opened an illegal account.
And the law is clear. So let me tell you. We did not see any evidence that the bank accounts were opened as prescribed by the revised laws of St. Lucia, Cap 1501 Finance Act, Number 33, Paragraph 2, regarding approval of the Accountant General.
So, Guy, while you were a minister, could you have gone and opened an account without getting approval from the Ministry of Finance or from the Director of Finance?
Nobody, no individual can open an account for any department of government without the approval of the Ministry of Finance or the Accountant General. So Kenny Anthony, when you want to talk about people's personal or business accounts in Panama, under your watch as Prime Minister and Minister of Finance, Hillel and Jafali opened an account in the UK without the approval. Kenny Anthony, sound puti pusah. Now, you think that's all the information? We enquired of the Department of External Affairs on the nature of the account. However, the department could not present information on the account. Alva, that is for you. You are the Minister of Foreign Affairs. Our account was opened in an embassy and you did not know and your department have no information. Tansar, report laddie, that is not Guy Joseph's report, you know. They say stories about us, but we give you evidence to back up what we are saying. And this is not political evidence we are giving you there. This is government of St. Lucia evidence. Here's what it says. "We did not see any evidence that the bank accounts were opened as prescribed by the revised laws of St. Lucia. In examining the bank statements presented, we were..." In examining the bank statements presented, we were unable to provide a full analysis as the supporting invoices needed could not be obtained from the Embassy."
So in other words there, Guy, what has happened is that the Embassy expended stuff, but there were no invoices to support the money that they spent. But they spent a total of?
Sixty-six thousand one hundred and eighty pounds. Now, now hear me. Hear me, hear what I'm telling you? You opened an account in the name of the Embassy without the proper papers. You go and buy a Range Rover in the name of the Embassy. And Hillier am saying you bought a Range Rover. Guy Joseph is saying, "You bought a Range Rover in the name of the Embassy." It was registered in the name of the Embassy. Soon on portemelodias. Soon on portemelodias. The vehicle was registered in the name of the Embassy. Ek leive sedlis ivan lenon. Ek otaif ebobol ek customs pulajekesla. When y'all, when y'all got rid of Chico, but time will tell. The longest rope haven't end. Now you think that's all? Expenditure from the account varied, comprising of funds to Embassy staff and payment to vendors. While bank statements only recorded the cheque number, we were unable to determine some of the payments based on the cheque stubs as seen in the table below. And Hillier, there were three cheques on your name. Cheque number 1002. And in the column that speaks about the details, there's none. Cheque number. Don't worry about the amount. We will let them come and say what we say is not true. Cheque number 10013, 10th July 2015. Ernest Hillier, no details on cheque stub. Okay? Cheque account, cheque number 1028, 5th October. Ernest Hillier, no details on cheque stub. Y'all want to look at other people and call them names? Milila? Auditor Akidi? Bagay Joseph? And then when Alan Chasney say y'all were running an account that y'all didn't have permission for, y'all want to bring him before Kangaroo Court in Parliament and to try and condemn him? The people of St Lucia will stand with Alan Chasney because Alan Chasney spoke the truth. Thank you, Dominic.
Ladies and gentlemen, just a moment. Me question. Me question a con speaker. Now, you know, we have to take the time to let the people know the truth. Because the Labour Party is good at propaganda and lies. However, I am happy about those exercises because in the past, we just figure, let them tell their lies, and we never said anything. And even our own people began to believe them. So now you know the truth. You know, you know who are the people who are at fault and who are the people doing harm to this country. Bon, messieurs. Hot pack on that guy? Guy just come on say. Start like, hot guy fini? Guy, moi sav pou information ou pas manche sa? Vin ban noti mi a pli information?
Mama if flambo! Good night! I bring you special greetings tonight. And this is a serious meeting. We are in the heart of Labour Party tonight. We are here to deal with the business of St Lucia. And so, I greet everyone in the diaspora who's following us. I bring you special greetings from our political leader. He is not here, but as you can see, he has a very capable team in his absence taking care of matters underground. And so, I acknowledge every supporter of the United Workers' Party. I acknowledge our followers on Facebook and those of you who are here. Now, I want to say, I'll begin my presentation with a quote. It says, "I always believe that ultimately, if people are paying attention, then we get good government and good leadership. And when we get lazy as a democracy and civically start taking shortcuts, then the result is bad government and politics." End of quote. And that was by Barack Obama, former President of the United States. Why did I begin with this quote? Because we have become complacent in this country. We just believe things because politicians say. I don't want you to believe things just because Guy Joseph said it. I want you to examine for yourself. I want you to go out and do the research that is necessary. Make informed decisions. Many times I've heard our news reporters say ministers have cleared the air on a matter and all the minister has done is lied to the people of St Lucia in saying that they are clearing the air. Once we become lazy, we fail to investigate things for ourselves. And the meaning of civically is operating as a town, a country or an entity. So, we have a responsibility to know the truth for ourselves. Not what the platform presents, but what you can examine for your own self. And I will give you information tonight, and it is for you to examine. St Lucia is in trouble. St Lucia tuaka. We are in big trouble. Se pa piastit tuaka nuwa di dai. I don't want to be disrespectful to the Prime Minister. And I will try not to be disrespectful to him. But it's a crying shame what we have become as a country and how people measure us. By the idiotic statements made by our Prime Minister. I have tried to find words in the English dictionary to describe the behavior and the pronouncements of our Prime Minister, and I cannot find it. How can a Prime Minister? And I was watching something of silly moments with Caribbean politicians. And you know St Lucia features right up there? Because St Lucia's Prime Minister said, "Watch what you eat and eat what you watch." I mean, I don't know if you embarrassed, but I am. I am embarrassed. And every young St Lucian who has been to school, who has a basic level of elementary education can say that they embarrassed by the Prime Minister. A teacher of maybe grade three said to me, "How do I explain to a child in school that St Lucia is not in Europe? How do I explain that to a child when they tell me, 'But the Prime Minister said we are part of Europe'?" Now we can laugh at these things, they can be comical, but it makes a statement about us as a people. It means that the people who elected him are worse than him. The people who elected him have to be worse than him to believe that he's better than them to be the Prime Minister? By word. Things are hard in this country. Every corner you turn, everywhere you go, our people are crying. And it doesn't matter if you are Labour or if you are flambo or if you belong to no political party or you never voted or you don't have an ID card, things are hard in this country. Whether you are businessman or you have no employment, everybody in the same category these days, things are hard and people are crying. Do you know? Ring the bell, es ring the bell. Do you know there is a backlog of people at the funeral homes who cannot get buried because the families don't have money to bury their loved ones? You, you know, you know, I lost my mother not too long ago. And I know the pain. And as long as you have not buried your loved one, that chapter is not closed. Can you believe that today at OKEU, if you cannot pay the medical bill, whether it is 1,000 or 10,000 or 100,000, you cannot get a death certificate to bury your loved one? When United Workers' Party came into government under the leadership of Alan Chasney, we cleared the bills of everybody at OKEU, at VH and at St Jude Hospital. We gave everybody a blank page. Today, the bills have accumulated again. And Labour Party was the one who passed the bill for the establishment of OKEU Hospital. And today, mun passa mem juen a death certificate. And I say it without fear of criticism. The substandard service and equipment and operations of the hospitals in St Lucia are causing some of the deaths of people prematurely. Ek mem siyo malfair operation. Mem siyo malfair sayo fea. Lemunau kotamo su pasai peyo. Pumal twa vayo. U pasate we more. That is what we have become under this wicked and uncaring Labour Party government. And I know some people have money and they can afford to pay it. So they don't care. But I have a right to care. Because thousands of people voted for the United Workers' Party in Castries Southeast. And thousands of people in every constituency in this country voted for a United Workers' Party. So I know you didn't bring the misery upon yourself. But nevertheless, we are all suffering together. And so I move on. Everywhere you pass, people are complaining about the cost of living. And I am telling you, there is, I know my colleague spoke about inflation. It is not inflation that have caused the prices to be so high. I will tell you what caused the prices to be so high as we go along. The government of the St Lucia Labour Party, in their first year in office, overtax you by 70 million dollars. And you see this big book that is in front of Brother Harold there? On the first page, that gives you the summary, you would see that the government collected over 70 million dollars more than the projected revenue that they had in the estimates of revenue and expenditure for that year. And to further compound the situation, Philippe J. Pierre said, "The 70 was not enough, so if we tell lot 30 something million as we." And they want to collect an extra 100 million dollars in taxes on the backs of the poor people of St Lucia. The PM's response to inflation is that inflation is imported. Well, I have news for them tonight. Is tax imported? Is tax an imported item, commodity or policy? The new 2.5% was it imported? Now I told you, I will tell you. The tax has a label on it. And the label reads, "Made in St Lucia by Philippe J. Pierre and distributed by the heartless ministers of the St Lucia Labour Party." That is not made in China. That is not made in the UK. That is not made in Trinidad. It is made in St Lucia by Philippe J. Pierre and it is distributed by his Zelavs, the heartless ministers. The ministers like Emma Hippolyte, who when they ask, "Why are the prices so high? Is the price gouging?", she said, "Kill it!" But I think she really meant, "Let's kill the people of St Lucia with the high prices." So yes, not even bread some families can afford today. Not even bread. St Lucia is in trouble! But I have a little bit of hope. There is help on the way. There is help with Alan Chasney and the United Workers' Party. Operation Rescue St Lucia will need every right-thinking St Lucian to be on board. And I can tell you, under the authority of the political leader, the first tax that will go on the United Workers' Party is the 2.5% levy introduced by Philippe J. Pierre and the Labour Party. And Alan Chasney is a man of his word. If he tells you he will do it, he does it. He promised us five to stay alive and he delivered on five to. and he delivered on five to stay alive! Yes, my people, if we did wrong in government, Labour Party deal with us. You have the reins of power today, but don't punish the people of St. Lucia. Why do a PM want people to speculate? I will show you by their own record. This is the Labour Party manifesto and I will show you what they say they stand for. Trust, accountability, honesty, transparency, integrity, discipline, and effectiveness. Now, I will use just one. Transparency. If you know something wrong happened with the account in Panama, you have to be transparent. That is what you promise the people. So menen nosemunaki ala kontla ek menekome la jay yo juen from Commission. Pavin mati by St. Lucien ek diyo, I leave it for them to speculate. Prime Ministers don't want people to speculate. The facts are available, but you see, if he present the facts, you will see he is a liar. Now, I will, I will give you more. I will give you more on page nine. Because I don't want it to be what Guy Joseph said. Page nine, number seven. It says, "In collaboration with the private sector, transfer some government fixed assets to the private sector with the intention of converting government loan payments into lease rental payments to reduce the government debt obligations." So tan sa Philip J. Pierre dikai fe ala manifestoi, he will take state assets and he will transfer it to private companies and the private companies will now rent these state assets to the government. Pam wikidi. The manifesto of the St. Lucia Labour Party. That is why I told you, President Barack Obama said, "If we become lazy in a democracy, we get bad government and bad politics." Because you know what? Nupale ridsa Labour Party diotikaife. Nukute sayo di, bat sakie ku ya. So, I want to ask, the lands at Banam, was that one of the properties that was transferred to a private entity below market price? Why didn't Slaspa take that land and develop it so that all the persons importing sand from Guyana that have to load, offload in View Fort and pay 100 dollars per yard pu menemute Castries? So ayad sab abesakakuto desa dollar Castries, the white sand. And you give the main entrance of the port to one of your financiers, Reno Gajada. Now, I come into Reno a little later. You think he building the horse racing track or the donkey track for free? He had draw a lot kote! Now, I will go further. So we have to watch them. How many state assets will be transferred? They have already transferred. Now, I want to read. "In collaboration with the private sector, transfer some government fixed assets to the private sector." So Port Castries has been transferred to GPH. And Harold Port Soufre has been transferred to GPH. Ek Javier for Labowi ek View Fort North. Yo me alakle asu port View Fort. Pierson bahafanye pu 40 years. Kontine vote by Labour. Ek kese flambo hotka afekti. Use labour ukay more labour, oblige more labour. Bad government labour sa ukay more! So, state assets are being transferred left, right, and center to persons. Now, it's not transferred to locals, you know. On page nine, number 11. "A Labour Party government will exempt workers earning up to 4,000 dollars a month from paying income tax." This will limit thousands of workers from paying income tax, which will ensure more disposable income and purchasing power for that group of workers and provide a consumer demand-driven boost to our local economy. How many persons earning 4,000 dollars today not paying taxes? Now, I know what they will do. The year before elections, they will come around and give it to you. Me komé yo hapwe fromu asu over... Si yo hak overtax nu 100 million balani. Pu katlané yo ukay overtax nu 400 million. I'm coming. I'm coming. On page 16. Muwlo ukopan sangadiyasa. Marwlo di se guy givini di story about Labour Party. It says, "Support the fishers through their cooperatives and immediately remove the additional $1.50 excise tax on fuel sold into the fisheries sector." Immediately hapwe delane. Es yo hatiye 150 ya by fishermen. Brother Harold, es yo hatiye 150 ya. Ko se fisherman View Fort North la. The fishermen from Savans Bay. Muw salan fishermen from View Fort North ki ko parit Savans Bay. Muw salan fishermen View Fort. Muw salan fishermen from Labowi. Bobamutou ukole Labour Party katra ikwenio. Under a UWP government, we introduce a $1.50 on fuel for road maintenance. What was the highest price of a gallon of fuel under a United Workers' Party? 13.95 dollars. Under 13.95 dollars included the $1.50. So yo galogias, plis shai vini abapati za flambo sete 12 dollar ek katwi ve kenzoo. 13.95 dollars. 12 dollar ek katwi ve kenzoo. Pu se fishaman na ki pe pa ikopan sangadiya. Muw le spitiye. Abapati za flambo, abapati za labour! Fuel weve 17.95 dollars ek yo pokotiye 150 ya. And the price of a barrel of fuel is around the same price that it was when UWP was in office. So muw fanti mathematics bow. Labour Party ho se pu fuel pu 17 dollar ek katwi ve kenzoo. 17. 17. Bo, si utiye unregulated price la at 17 dollars, siu check 17 dollars. 17 dollar pu a gallon gas. Le utiye 150 asui, la still ni, yo gallon gas sete still 15 dollars ek 50 cents. I pati jamé oté sa abap Alan Shastner. So ek olé bakakwenio? So, sami nu ka still pay yo dollar ek 55 cents pli. Le yo utiye 150 abao at 17 dollars pasesi patisa flambo té apouwa. My people, what is so difficult to understand that the Labour Party is not for you? Why are we allowing the Labour Party to fool us? Pu ki sa jas et lisi ka kité labour ikwené yo otan souva kora? Na muw le mutoua wa la ba yo kadi tan sa. On page 14. "The repurposing of the IRDC and construction of mini facilities in all rural communities for the operating of emerging and existing producers." Botan sa yodi. Yodi ukay promote agro-food processing. Milila pamwki di. My Richard. Ki karri de sakpa souva piya. Se bu sa muw me linet muw. So they said they are going to reorganize or repurpose the IRDCs. Labour samanti. We went to Caldisac. We built a new building for the marketing board. We established a buying depot for other agricultural products and we had a grand opening with the Taiwanese government and our then Minister of Agriculture Ezekiel Joseph. That was the last real minister of agriculture we had in St. Lucia. So tan sa yodi ukai fe, yodi ukay bil mini. Kiman ye labour me mini kora? Mi ukay bil a mini horse racing track. Yo ble bil a mini hospital. Yo ble bil a mini airport. Yo ena four lane gaife, yo kité i delane. Se bu sete ka fe chimé ek one bridge one way. One lane bridge. Ipe flambo pu vin fe two lane bridge. Yo e presenté soufu ye pu 40 years ek yo kita one-way bridge soufu ye. Ipe patisa flambo Harold ek Shastner pu temé a two lane bridge soufu ye. So va votu ka ivini mini? Nu ka fini? Se bu sa idi iba hadi short ek iba hadi tall. Because mun ka fini abal labour set lisi. So, they said, "I challenge anybody from any constituency to tell me where one mini facility has been built in a community for agro-processing and for selling products of agriculture." So, when I tell you St. Lucia is in trouble, these are not my words. That is the reality. And I'm saying to you again, our only hope is the United Workers' Party. On page 20. Tan sa yodi. Number three. "The St. Jude Hospital will be opened within the shortest possible time." So, madu samu wli. I am backing what I'm saying with document. So Philip J. Pierre said, "They will open it as soon as possible." As soon as possible is a time. Is as soon as possible a time. Bo, later opposition tan sa idi. Press release dated 9 September 2019. Further, the hospital which was six months away from completion could have been finished with the loan funds of 20 million that was available from the Republic of China on Taiwan and partially drawn down. Next one. "When the UWP administration took office in 2016, they found the original reconstruction project at 80% completion." So, siudi, six months ite ka ivini. Abesan se as soon as possible. And as soon as possible, already past 26 months. Can you trust Philip J. Pierre? Can you trust what does St. Lucia? Bo men press release la telma. Men jisni portwe piya asui. Pu ipati se pali. Because Landres jueba ilabao 1,006 dollar by. Idi... You hear me saying that? Let's go. Because I realize it's getting late, but there are a few points I need to touch. So, now, what is the lifespan of concrete? And you can go and Google it. It is ranging between 50 and 100 years. And you have to start treating that concrete after that period of time. And it would have to be very good concrete. And I believe because the Americans did it back then, it was good concrete. So I give it the lifespan of the 100 years. O dia, Labour Party kadino, they have to break down the CDCs. How old is the CDC? The CDCs was built after the 1948 fire in Castries. St. Jude was built in 1944? 1940-44. The building was built and then 1942, that's right. 1942. So it's 81 years old. So on bu kasesi this year, because it's 75 years old, ek ipamo ukay kaitoba le mun. Me ukay bil concretness asu vie concrete ti 81 years old. You see, when men lie, their lies must find them out. So yo mem ka mati ek yo mem ka demati koyo. So, if the building now is 81 years old, its maximum lifespan is 19 years and you take a loan for 20 years. So konfin pe loana unbuwa bil a lot St. Jude. Because this St. Jude has outlived its useful life. People of View Fort, Labour Party want to tell you how much they love you. And they always capitalize... And they always capitalize on the death of people. I know three people from Viewfort North lost their lives during the fire. You don't have to say if you want to live in the Labour Party, you don't have to compensate for it. Now, you can never compensate fully for somebody's life. So, what was given was a little something to the family. You don't have to say between 2011 and 2016, it doesn't matter. But they will invoke their name to gain political sympathy. I don't invoke the name of the dead to gain political sympathy. I want everybody in St. Lucia to live for as long as possible and as healthy and as strong and as comfortable as possible. That's what the United Workers' Party stands for. And that is why we want to give you a first-class hospital to give you top-quality healthcare. I couldn't say it better than Dr. Wilson. She is a professional in the field. So, by the time you finish paying a loan of two hundred million, you don't have to build a lot of hospitals. You don't have to. That is what... So, you don't want a climate-resilient hospital, but you want climate-resilient housing. Now, you don't have to. You don't have to. Give me my smaller phone. Do I have it there? My smaller phone, the black one, yes. I will read you a letter from the Bank of St. Lucia. Bank of St. Lucia, Bank of St. Lucia, we appreciate your loyalty and trust in the Bank of St. Lucia. We're delighted to have served you since the opening of BOSL Shozel on October 25, 2022. To maintain our high service quality, a transaction fee of four dollars per transaction will be implemented effective September 15, 2023. Your continued support during the transaction period is highly valued. The transition period is highly valued. You don't have to. You don't have to. So, you don't have to. You know, with the ATM, you can only withdraw a certain amount. So, if you don't have to, you have to wait a week and you don't have to pay. Paying before you can withdraw. You don't have to. And you draw five hundred at a time. If you draw three five hundred, it's $12 for the bank to pay. You see how wicked this Labour Party government is? People, this is not a joke, you know. You don't have to. This is the livelihood of people. And I'm telling you, because you can buy bread for your family today, don't take it for granted. There are many children in this country who go to bed hungry and wake up hungry. And the United Workers' Party had introduced a school feeding program. The Labour Party chose a school feeding program. Now, I'm going to read John Peters' book because you have given me a time limit. But I want to tell him, why are you, who's supposed to be a professional engineer, come and lie to the people of St. Lucia about the size of a building? First of all, you all call it a box. And then, in your report... The report on page twenty says that the hospital that we were building is about a hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet. Monsieur, we are in a bad situation in St. Lucia. When a man who's supposed to be a professional can come, invoke the name of wise King Solomon, and lie to the people of St. Lucia, and put his signature on a report to say that the building is a hundred and fifty-something thousand square feet, and I can give him the measurement of each of the buildings. The main building is one hundred and thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight square feet. The dialysis building is twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-six square feet. And the physiotherapy building is seventeen thousand and eighty-eight square feet. Giving us a grand total two hundred and seventeen, one hundred and eighty-two square feet. And John Peters and the entire team that nature to this document and take and send to St. Jude and India and miss the building to just set for money. And you know why they said that? To try and show that the repairs of St. Jude was cheaper than the new building that we were building. But, on page, the money we spent included, apart from all this square footage that I gave you there, twenty-two thousand square feet from the old St. Jude, which is for administration and the kitchen, and another five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four square feet for the laundry. Another total. And that is... I want you to understand. No, it was twenty-two thousand square feet in area in the new building. I want to read it. The laundry is five thousand, two seventy-four, and the administrative building is sixteen thousand, seven ninety-one point seven. A total of over twenty-two thousand. So, the money the United Workers' Party spent on the new hospital, which they estimated at a hundred and eighteen million at the time of the report, is working out to be much cheaper. Even if I use the pro-rata basis by saying sixty percent was for construction and forty percent was for material and equipment. They are still liars. SLP has raised the price of cooking gas to the highest it has ever been in this country. And to further compound the matter, you don't have to. You don't have to. So, you don't have to. You don't have to. I want to know why the price of bread is so high? Why groceries is so high? Every week you go in the supermarket, the price is changed. I want to read it. Emma has a secret meeting about pot. I want to know if she had a secret meeting with Masie. I want to read it. We are finished in this country. I am calling on the Bank of St. Lucia to clarify the letter that I read tonight and tell the people why you are charging them these four dollars. I want to read it. Did you sell the four dollars for each transaction? Now, my final point for tonight, as I interviewed Del Elliott and Philip J. Pierre. Now, I want to read it. I've never heard a time span that a project can take one to eighteen months. Now, we have builders here. We have contractors. We have intelligent people. You ever hear time estimate that a project can be done one to eighteen months? You have twelve to eighteen. You have eighteen to twenty-four. You have twenty-four to thirty-six. So, if it can be done in one month, why are you there eighteen months working? Because you said a project can finish anywhere between one and eighteen months. So, I want to read it. I want to read it. I want to read it. Is it? So, I don't understand the language now. I know Joshi is from India. So, it may be that she doesn't have to. But Philip J. Pierre, it is Joshi who has one to eighteen months. Now... So... Del asked Philip, "Is there a contract for St. Jude?" What was his response? He said, "There's no contract." I want to read it. It's self-help. Because if there is no contract, then you don't have to. So, now it's not Joshi who is working. It's Renault. Joshi is an employee of Renault. Now, I want to read it. I want to read it. So, if it is not a self-help and it is not being paid from the Saudi loan, it is being paid from local funds, it means that the hospital is costing us more than the two hundred and one million dollars that they borrowed from the Saudis. Now, you promise us transparency and accountability. How we don't know how much Renault is working for? So, I want to read it. If you don't have to in St. Jude, it's not worth it. And if you don't pay, who is going to pay? And what conditions? Because if there is no contract, who is going to draw? No, but with government, even if you're working by the day, you have to sign a contract because there is a rate for the daily paid workers in government. It's not worth it. It's just to borrow from banks and draw. And if you borrow from banks and draw, you don't have to. This is government money. There is a process for drawing down money from the consolidated fund. So, Philip J. Pierre, again, you are caught lying to the people of St. Lucia. Tell us the true cost of the contract that Labour has or that Renault has at the hospital. Tell us how many millions you are spending now and how many millions you will spend. So, I want to say that even two hundred million is not enough. Now, I want to read the Minister of Health in St. Lucia. There's no Atat OKU hospital most of the times. Why are persons resigning in management every day at the OKU? Except for those who resign. It's the ones who go. No medication at the hospital. No medication at the health centers. I want to read it. About Labour. SLP believes in short-term jobs. Alan Shastner believes in long-term jobs. And the only jobs that have been created in Viewfort in the last ten years were the jobs created by Alan Shastner and the United Workers' Party. Now, I tell BPO, construction at the St. Jude project, the water project, the Wasko building, all of these jobs. Today, the taxi drivers are bawling. Yesterday, Gosam Di Latieni can't fly at the International Airport. And a taxi driver who votes by Labour is a millionaire. Now, I didn't get to deal in Labour Party's manifesto at the next meeting. I will deal with it. They promised a cruise port in Viewfort and they promised a home port in Viewfort. And you are there and you are signing a contract to develop Viewfort. If you have Viewfort North, Labo West and Viewfort South, you don't have to take a vote by any Labour party. There is a sellout of the South by the St. Lucia Labour Party. Your reps, Alva, Musa, and Kenny have sold you out. And it will take only Alan Shastner and the UWP to rescue Viewfort and to rescue St. Lucia. I thank you. God bless you. And have a good night.
Yes, thank you, guys. People, I know it's late, but before you leave, let's just do our song and we'll be on our way.